Thank you again to council members Gruel, Parks, Rosendall, Weiss, and Zeyn, who are all here on time. We thank them for their attendance. We have three members who are excused today, council members Kargnis, Han, and Wizar. Mr. Labange is excused to arrive at 11:00. That leaves us awaiting council members Perry, Reyes, and Smith. Thank you, Mr. Westen, as well, for joining us. As soon as we have them, we will have a quorum and be able to begin the business of the city. We also have special presentations each Friday to welcome special guests that are here to mark notable occasions and accomplishments here in Los Angeles. And as always, we will begin that shortly. In the meantime, we want to thank those viewers on Channel 35 who has joined us and welcome you, as well as those people who are here in council chambers. We're broadcast live on our city's cable system, and each meeting at 10:00 a.m. We're also rebroadcast in the evenings on Channel 35. We're also available on the Internet at our city's homepage, lacity.org, where you can catch live streaming webcasts of our council meetings and also go back and watch any of the archived footage of our past council meetings, which is there online as well. Finally, you can use your telephone to listen in if you're not close to a television or a computer and call 213-621-CITY. That's 213-621-CITY. And you can listen in on the audio proceedings of the city council or any of our committees. Our agendas are made available 72 hours in advance for all people through the Internet or here in person in council chambers or through our city clerk's office. The agendas are divided into items that have had a public hearing and those that have not yet had a public hearing. Cards from the public can be filled out in the back, and you can hand those to sergeants-at-arms on either side of the aisles. And we'll be sure to include your comments in any of the items that are before us today. Items that have already had a public hearing require a council member to reopen the public hearing. We also have a section of the meeting for general public comments, which is for items that are not on the agenda but nevertheless under the jurisdiction of the city of Los Angeles. And two minutes per speaker here at the podium or in our remote facilities in Van Nuys and San Pedro, where you can testify remotely and we can see you here in chambers. Thanks again to council members Alarcon, Gruel, Parks, Rosendall, Weiss, Westen, and Zeyn. We are going to begin our first presentation this morning. Mr. Zeyn is going to lead, but we're still awaiting his presence, I believe. So I want to remind Mr. Smith to please come down, and we will begin shortly. So thank you for your patience, and sit tight. Finally, you can use your telephone to listen in if you're not close to a television or a computer and call 213-621-CITY. That's 213-621-CITY. And you can listen in on the audio proceedings of the city council or any of our committees. Our agendas are made available 72 hours in advance for all people through the Internet or here in person in council chambers or through our city clerk's office. The agendas are divided into items that have had a public hearing and those that have not yet had a public hearing. Cards from the public can be filled out in the back, and you can hand those to sergeants-at-arms on either side of the aisles. And we'll be sure to include your comments in any of the items that are before us today. Items that have already had a public hearing require a council member to reopen the public hearing. We also have a section of the meeting for general public comments, which is for items that are not on the agenda but nevertheless under the jurisdiction of the city of Los Angeles. And two minutes per speaker here at the podium or in our remote facilities in Van Nuys and San Pedro, where you can testify remotely and we can see you here in chambers. Thanks again to council members Alarcon, Gruel, Parks, Rosendall, Weiss, Westen, and Zeyn. We are going to begin our first presentation this morning. Mr. Zeyn is going to lead, but we're still awaiting his presence, I believe. So I want to remind Mr. Smith to please come down, and we will begin shortly. So thank you for your patience, and sit tight. Okay, while we await Mr. Zeyn, I would like to recognize Mr. Westen for our first presentation. To my friends from Beirut, I said that you were going to be before the puppy, but I think the puppy beat you, because we're waiting, Mr. Zeyn.
Good morning, Mr. President and members. Today is, as you can tell, Pet Adoption Friday. Now, I'm standing here today with Joe, who works at the West Valley Shelter. Joe does not need to be adopted. But Julian is a two-year-old Chihuahua mix and was brought into the shelter not too long ago. He does have his shots. He's ready to go home. If you're looking for unconditional love, you get it in a companion animal like Julian. For those of you at the city that know that we've been doing this going on three years, we have a 100% adoption rate. So Julian's feeling pretty good that by the end of the day, he will be home with his new parents. If anyone watching this would like to adopt Julian, they can call 888-452-7381. And if you're watching this and you get really excited about Julian and you call and you find out that Julian's been adopted, don't worry. We have six shelters and hundreds of companion animals just like Julian. Now, about two-thirds of the animals that we have on Pet Adoption Friday are adopted by city workers. So city workers, look at his face. Not Joe's face. Look at Julian's face. And if you want to take this doggy home and give him the kind of love and attention he needs, I'm sure he will give it to you in return. So what we're going to do is we're going to ask Joe to stay in the back for a little while. If anyone is interested in Julian, you go back, you talk to him. He's a little nervous right now, but going back, we'll have her stay here for a half hour or so. Anyway, Julian needs a home, and you need a pet. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Westen. I'd like to now acknowledge Mr. Garcetti for our next presentation.
Good morning, and thank you very much, Madam President. It is our honor to be here with a very special group of individuals who have come to us. And colleagues, we have with us two peers from our sister city of Beirut, two city council members who have joined us here today for a very special presentation. I will say a few words later, but I'd like to hand it over to our Lebanese-American council member from the Third District, the one and only Dennis Phillips-Zeyn.
Thank you, Eric Garcetti, our council president. I haven't seen you, gentlemen.
It's been three years.
It's been three years?
Yeah.
Well, I'm very pleased to be here with my president of the city council, Mr. Garcetti, and our friends from Beirut, Lebanon, and also our council general, Mr. Diab, who's the council general to the city of Los Angeles from Lebanon. The presentation, it brings me back to the homeland of my grandparents, Beirut, Lebanon, where we established a sister city three years ago. Councilman Garcetti and I were back there with some of the folks that we have standing with us this morning, and I can't believe it's been three years. I'm like in shock about that. Well, much has happened since I introduced the motion in 2005 to establish a sister-city relationship with Beirut, Lebanon. Eric Garcetti laid the groundwork, and I did and did the finishing job with him in Beirut, an absolutely incredible experience. June 20, 2006, this council approved the sister-city affiliation between our two beautiful seaside cities. And we talk about a seaside city, the Mediterranean, the Middle East, Beirut, Lebanon. Ten days later in Beirut, June 30, a delegation of 23 representatives from Los Angeles witnessed the signing of the sister-city agreement at the Nicholas Sosak Palace. I remember that beautiful place. And by the way, when we eat in Beirut, Lebanon, the table's 60 feet long. First, you have the food, then you have another table 60 feet long with all the desserts. And it's absolutely spectacular. That's why I gained so much weight when I was there. The agreement includes the words "and a gesture of friendship and goodwill. We agree to support and encourage opportunities of mutual benefit, practical exchanges in the fields of business, arts and culture, health, science, education, sports, and tourism." In that whirlwind three-day visit, whirlwind three-day visit to Beirut in 2006, we were received warmly and graciously by our Lebanese hosts. We met with the Prime Minister of Lebanon, Interior Minister of Lebanon, United States Ambassador, and the mayor of Beirut, also honored to visit some of the most impressive cultural and historic locations in the country. Since that time, Los Angeles-Beruud Sister City Committee has worked with the Lebanese-American Foundation, Los Angeles Cedar Rotary Club, the Lebanese Ladies Cultural Society, and other Lebanese-American organizations to promote the spirit of cooperation. In 2007, the Sister City Committee facilitated donation of surplus fire equipment from the Los Angeles City Fire Department to the city of Beirut, hosted the Notre Dame University-Beruud Corral at the Los Angeles Sister City Cultural Festival, joined in the ceremonial unveiling of the Beirut Sister City sign on the City Hall South, which is adjacent to City Hall, and donated 40-foot containers with valuable medical supplies to free clinics in Beirut. Just last June, we were joined in these council chambers by the Council General of Lebanon as we celebrated the 65th anniversary of the independence of Lebanon. Today, I'm pleased to welcome two distinguished gentlemen from the Beirut City Council. It is my honor and pleasure to introduce the honorable, the honorable, who chauffeured us around Beirut, Lebanon. Tofik, Tofik, Tofik Vice President of the municipality of Beirut and his colleague, the honorable council member Rami Halawani. While they're visiting Los Angeles, they're meeting with representatives of the Los Angeles Police Department, Los Angeles Fire Department, Department of Water and Power. Also pleased to, you don't have a water crisis over there, do you? You're fine. A lot of water. And the rates are low. Okay, very good. We like that. Also pleased to acknowledge that today's council general includes a motion that I introduced to approve the sale of two surplus ambulances to the city of Beirut, urgent eye vote, and that's item number 19. Also like to present the resolutions to the honorables who will present with us, who are at the table with us at the council general, the council president, Eric Garcetti, at the formal signing ceremony in 2006. And the youngest member of the city council who represents the future of our city's cooperation and friendship, Rami, that's you. How old are you?
Now 31.
31?
When I first entered, I was 26.
26. Well, that's like when you entered. Thank you both for your efforts and dedication to the Los Angeles-Beruud Sister City relationship. And I met with Chief Bratton just before coming down to council, and I know you're going to be visiting the police department. Chief Bratton brought these gifts from the Los Angeles Police Department for each of you and on behalf of the Los Angeles Police Department and Chief Bratton personally. And then we have two presentations to make. This is a presentation which I'm sure will fit in your suitcase going back to Beirut.
That's the big one.
It, Vice President, Beirut City Council, recognition of the dedication and work you have provided to enhance the sister-city relationship between Los Angeles and Beirut, residents of the two beautiful cities, and this is signed by the city family. This is for you. Congratulations. And we have also, Rami, one for you, Rami. Congratulations to you. And we're going to introduce the other representatives that are here on behalf of the committee. And Eric Garcetti is going to take it over. There you go. Take it over.
Thank you. Okay. We'll hear from our counterparts and from the council general briefly. I will speak very briefly as well. I just want to thank these two gentlemen for their warmth and their hospitality. When you go to a new country, the way in which you're received is a reflection of the people that are there, and I've never been received as warmly as we were in Beirut. We have so many parallels, not just seaside cities, but our weather, our diversity, some of the challenges that we face, but the strong ties that we have, not only through Lebanese-American population here, but also through those folks that are tied to the trade between our two countries and hopefully even stronger ties moving forward. Over dinner last night, they remarked that they've signed a lot of sister-city agreements, and none of them are listening to this television program in the other cities, so don't worry. They said the strongest one is with Los Angeles, because of the people behind us have ensured that it wasn't just a symbolic agreement, but one which is enriched every single day with what we are doing, whether it's the friendship that we're doing to increase public safety through the ambulances and surplus properties, whether it's making sure that when there's needs in Beirut or vice versa, that we see to that with one another. We have learned a tremendous amount from our neighbor. We brag that we're an old American city, because we were founded in 1781. Well, as we celebrated our 228th birthday this year, I think Beirut's, what's your founding date?
About 3,000.
So they celebrate about their 3,000th birthday.
And they don't look that old.
And they don't look that old at all. So it is with great, great pride and much love between our countries that we welcome you here today, and it's wonderful to receive you in our chambers just as you received us as well.
Thank you. And Mr. Zeyn and Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Rosendall wanted to say a few words before our next presentation.
I just wanted to acknowledge, when I, many years ago, in 1974, I was in Beirut. And I had a fabulous time in Beirut. And then we saw what happened toward the end of the next year, the middle of 1985. And we saw 10, 15 years of just terrible, terrible actions. Then we've seen a new day develop. And I think one of the most ironic thing was, we recognized Beirut as a sister city, and then two minutes later, there was what happened a few years ago. Which, my instincts are now that things are getting better and that the relationships are building. But whatever we can do in the sister-city relationship with Beirut and with Lebanon to continue, to strive toward peace in the Mideast, to continue to show the relationship between the Lebanese and the Israelis and the Syrians and the Jordanians and the Egyptians, we must do. And so I, in a very personal sense, suffered the energy that we went through there in the past, and I look forward to peace in the future. Thank you.
I will, I will give you a straight and brief answer about what you said. Unfortunately, Lebanon is the mirror of the region. And whatever problems we have in the region is being reflected all the time on our people and our soil. So what happened in 1975 was a reflection of a conflict, the Israeli-Arab conflict. And what happened also in 19, in 2006, after these guys left Beirut...
Ten days later.
Ten days later, and signing this sister-city agreement. It was also a reflection of a conflict between Israelis and other military factions in Lebanon. What I would like to say is that we are eager for peace, for peace with everyone, with all our neighbors, and with all the people who really want us to live in a stable condition where we can secure peace and prosperity for our children and our future. And don't think that we are not suffering from what's happening. The Lebanese people are educated people, people who are on a certain level of lifestyle, and they like their country, they're fighting for the existence and for the perseverance of their country. And now we are lucky to have a president of the republic who will be, hopefully, unifying this country once for all and giving all the factions the chances for a better life.
Very good. Our new president, Barack Obama, who has said since the very beginning of his administration that he will engage himself in that process. Let's hope our new president provides American leadership to complement where the Lebanese are.
Great. I would like to say a few words, just a briefing about our relationship that will give an idea where we stood for and where we are today. Honorable Eric Garcetti, President of the Los Angeles City Council, council members of the city of Los Angeles, ladies and gentlemen. Beirut, known at all times as the lighthouse of the Orient, is recognized today at the World Book Capital 2009. In the light of its focus on cultural diversity, dialogue, and tolerance, facing great challenges in terms of peace and coexistence. Modern Beirut's uniqueness as a place and with the idea of pluralist, multi-confessional city is no different today from other cities in the process of construction and reconstruction, witnessed in the period of the welfare state in the '60s during President Fuad Shihab's regime and in the '90s under Prime Minister Rafik Hariri's governing. Bearing in mind that urban development in today's post-war involves specific projects rather than broad plans geared by public-private joint ventures that will overcome post-war difficulties in speaking directly about sociopolitical issues. For instance, as we speak today, there are issues of the past to consider, not to mention with aspects to preserve and which to disregard. There are also opportunities to realize old plans as well as to make new ones and to start over as it were in the hopes of making things better than they were before. The city council of Beirut, elected for the first time directly from the people in 1998, realized that any, that any restoration or reconstruction cannot occur without a palpable vision concerned with the physical form and layout of a city, how its districts and neighborhoods might be conformed, and how specific architectural projects might proceed to make it a better place in which to live. Above all else, however, there is also the need of a broader social and cultural future vision for the council to foresee, in order not to promote administrative leadership and to provide guidance only, but also to give the people a more fundamental sense of themselves and who they might become. Since 1998, Beirut City Council was committed to project visions of development and prepares the capital public not only to absorb change and progress, but also to become a partner in the renewing of the city phase that since then has been drastically improving. Despite all scars of successive wars and chaotic situations, no viable alternative in the region has succeeded in replacing Lebanon's capital in 33 years of trial and error. Given the basic cultural and multilingual infrastructure, Beirut has retained its letter of credit as an international city. The continued physical presence of foreign communities is an important channel of perpetual contact and renewal. It keeps Lebanon's capital constantly on the alert, familiar with innovations and progress, always seeking new challenges. One of these was on the 31st day of August 2005, when the visit of Mr. Eric Garcetti to Beirut City Hall paved the road for a sister-city agreement that became a reality one year later. In the presence of Beirut City Council members, I had the honor to meet that day an American public servant eager to promote and set a sister-city agreement between two cities, Beirut and Los Angeles, capable of motivating the two people on various activities that will expand the horizon of the city of Beirut, thus allowing it to be identified as the leading capital of the Middle East. The signing ceremony took place officially at the Palace of Nicholas Sosak in Ashrafiey on June 30, 2006, where both delegations stressed on productive, loyal, and fruitful relationships. I compare our relationship, Dr. Joanna Nashif said, to a spider web very well-formed and maintained to a point that even if you cut one, any thread of it, it will get connected by itself again. It is time, as Dennis Zeyn declared, for the American people to know that Lebanon is safe, hospitable, and prosperous country despite the media criticism and misleading propaganda. Both American and Lebanese city council members participated in a thorough and productive discussion where President Garcetti stressed on three major headlines. The first one includes social and cultural exchanges. The second one includes the economic, tourism, and trade side. The third one stresses on political and governmental side and seeks solutions for traffic and water problems, including digging deep water wells and undertaking sewage treatment. Following that meeting, important steps were taken, forging solid ties between the residents of the two great cities, were generous contributions. of the two great cities, where generous contributions through the leadership of Council Member Denis Zain and the help of the Board of L.A. Beirut Sister City Organization motivated by the presence of my dear friend Ferris Wehbi facilitated the delivery and valuable medical supplies of firefighting equipment. Hoping that the future plans will be more successful and more productive, in the name of Beirut, City Council member, President, I invite you all to share with us, as our ancestors have, the magic art of constructing mosaic beauty with significant little stones. Our dream to develop the city of Beirut should become a reality for all of us, so that those who immigrated, as many of you, out of frustration, taking away their skills, ideals, and fortunes, seeking liberty in foreign lands, may now find a place and work, plenty of work, of challenging work to come back to. Only a national policy of reconstruction, to which the whole nation can rally in freedom and harmony, a policy enjoying credible stability and international endorsement, can achieve our goals. God bless you all, and thank you. I have this symbolic shield. This is the emblem of the city of Beirut. It shows the seedletry of Lebanon, the colors of our flag, and a Phoenician ship that gives an idea about how our ancestors, the Phoenicians, 3,000 years ago conquered the world with no military tools. They conquered the world with their smart mind and their trade, and you can conquer the world in a peaceful manner. And here, the book that says Beirut, Nutrix Legum, it means Beirut, the mother of law, because Beirut was the first capital in the Roman Empire where was built a law school. This is for Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you.
And this is for Mr. Zain.
Thank you.
And this is...
Thank you very much.
I thank you for...
He's okay, Ram is okay. So Council General?
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank the City Council for receiving us today and honoring two members of the City Council of Beirut. This, I guess, this ceremony brings, through the L.A. sister city, it brings Beirut closer to L.A. and L.A. a little closer to Beirut. I guess this relationship is very beneficial to our, both our communities, and not only through maybe the supply and the help that assistance that Beirut gets only from L.A. through sometimes some surplus in one city is a lifesaver in another city. The surplus of equipment or unneeded equipment that is in L.A. is a lifesaver sometimes in Beirut. We are very thankful for the, all the assistance that Beirut is getting from the City Council, especially, I would like to mention, Councilman Denis Zain and Eric Garcetti and Tom Lavange for all their assistance with the L.A. Beirut Sister City project. I only want, I also want to stress that it's not only the assistance, also cultural link. Beirut has a large history, a long history. If you walk through the downtown of Beirut, you walk through seven civilizations dating back to 3,000 years, back to the Phoenician time. So it is very important that we have also more than the assistance in fire equipment and other equipment, also the cultural link is very important between our two cities. And we hope, maybe this is the first time I say this, but I will say it in front of the members of the City Council of Beirut, maybe we can do an exhibition here in the city hall of the, between, a comparison between what was Beirut during the war and the facelift that it had after the war. We have some beautiful exhibition to show, and this would mirror image also the change that has happened in Los Angeles, the downtown of Los Angeles, from what it was and what it is today and what it's going to be in the future. So hopefully, we can do something on this, along this line. Thank you very much for all, for receiving us here and for honoring our City Council members. Thank you.
Thank you, Council General Diaw from the Council General of Lebanon, and Ferris Wehbi, who's the link between Los Angeles and Beirut, who's a good friend of Eric's, a good friend of mine, who will introduce our guests that are here and further explanation on the relationship, sister city.
Sure, thank you. City leaders, thank you very much for making this happen. As the Phoenicians 3,000 years ago used to get on their boats and go out there and make any new home their own and become a part of the fabric of that society, I have few members here from Lebanon that have immigrated to Los Angeles and made L.A. their home, and they care about Los Angeles and this city as much as they care about the home that they were born in, and I would like to introduce them. Gus Malkoun, Dr. Joanna Nashif, Ahmad Abu Hesn, Wafa Hubala, and thank you very much, and God bless you all.
Thank you, Madam President, and we will do photos. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'd like to recognize Councilmember Rosendahl for our next presentation.
As you can see, we multitask around here, and we do, we go, we go from Lebanon back to Los Angeles in a minute and a half, we do that. And I got to say that the Republic of Lebanon is an amazing country, and I am so proud that our city has created a sister relationship there. It can only be for the good. But let's talk about the Winward Wildcats as they assemble behind me. Wow! As we know, there aren't too many people I look up to in life, but I'm looking up right now. I would like to thank head coach Miguel, is he here? Well, I guess, oh, there he is. Hey, cool. And right next, where's Steve Martin? Steve Smith! Well, see, I was thinking about the Denzel thing. I got all excited there. Nice to see you, Steve. Okay, and then we have Ron Lowe, who's a former commissioner, and he's got a son in the school, too. Great, 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 great. Good to have those three folks here. Winward is a college preparatory school with a student population of about 460 students between the 7th grade and 12th grade. Winward challenges each student to achieve academic excellence within a nurturing atmosphere while encouraging students to be responsible, caring, well-informed, ethical, and prepared. Their athletic department provides a program that promotes respect, discipline, physical fitness, sportsmanship, leadership, and teamwork. But the real reason we are here today is because on March 20th, the Winward Boys Basketball Team became the 2009 Division V High School Boys Basketball State Championships by defeating St. Joseph Notre Dame at Alameda in the state title game, 69 to 53. Winward posted an overall 29 wins and six losses, a record, including a 19-game winning streak to close out the season. Winward also captured its league championship in the Olympic League with a record of 9 to 1 in league play in the eight-game playoff stretch to Southern Section Division V Championship. The team outscored their opponents by an average of 22 points a game. Outstanding. Okay? 22 points a game. Come on, folks! Let's throw a hoop! Let's throw one of these hoops! At the end of the 2008-2009 season, Winward ranked 11th in the Los Angeles Times Final Boys High School Basketball Poll and was the only Division V school to finish in the top 25 high school rankings. Also this year, the team will be graduating three seniors who'll be going to Division I colleges on scholarship to play basketball. Darius Morris, where's Darius Morris? There he is, okay. And you will be going to the University of Michigan. Congratulations, congratulations. Malcolm Washington, where's Malcolm? There he is, Malcolm, right behind me. Okay, they want to say you got a dad, you got a dad, right? Yeah, well, his name is Denzel Washington. Many of us know who he is, but the son is the one we're talking about. And where are you going to go?
UPenn.
Okay, he's going to be going to Pennsylvania. Okay, what do you call it, UPenn?
UPenn.
UPenn. University of Pennsylvania, okay. And Anthony Strover is going to UCLA. Go Bruins! Hey, Anthony! We got a new Bruin here, so we can just watch it right here in the home ranks, too. But the three of them are going on with scholarships. The Los Angeles City Council congratulates the 2009 Winward Wildcats for its outstanding season and victorious effort in capturing the 2009 Division V High School State Championship, and wish the school, the coaches, and the players continued success. Congratulations, everybody. Now, who wants to speak? You want to speak, Coach? Or do you want to speak, Professor? All three of you, come on over here. I'll have the coach first, so let's give the coach a round of applause. Wouldn't be here if it wasn't for his leadership.
First of all, good morning and thanks for having us, City Council. On behalf of the Winward School, I want to thank everybody for coming here and giving us this opportunity for you guys to see how great the team did this year, and hopefully, they tell me the hard part is, can you redo it again next year? And hopefully, we could be back next year and do it again. But on behalf of the Winward community and on the team, thanks for having us here this, today.
Thanks, gentlemen. And like the coach said, thank you for having us up here. I'm Steve Smith, the Athletic Director, and also wanted to thank you for acknowledging true student athletes. We have three students going on to great colleges, and the rest of the school, and the rest of the boys here are also excellent academic students, and just a proof that, you know, we do it the right way, and we're really proud of these kids. Thank you very much.
Ron, you want to say something real quick? Ron doesn't want to say anything, but I want the three to come on up. Get here, get here, get here, and you all say something. Go ahead.
First of all, on behalf of the whole team, I just want to thank everybody for having us here. This is a great experience. I just want to thank Ron, too, for giving us this opportunity to get honored in front of you guys. This is a great honor, and I just really appreciate it. Thank you.
All right.
Also like to thank Ron for this opportunity, and thank you for having us here. We're really excited. It's a big thing for us, and we're really excited about winning the state championship this year.
Great, 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 go for it.
Yeah, we just want to thank you again for everything, Ron, everybody for having us up here and giving me the opportunity to share this with my teammates and with everybody. Appreciate it.
Great. Well, thank you all, and we're going to have a little reception in the back there inviting everybody to it. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rosendahl, congratulations to you all. Now I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Reyes for our next presentation.
It's a pleasure to be here with you this morning to share a great story. The School for Advanced Studies at Brando Middle School creates a high-end learning opportunities for students to thrive in stimulating academic and social environments. I want to congratulate Principal Bolovski, Assistant Principal Moises...
Moises.
Moises, okay. I called you Moses, didn't I? Tanya Willis, teacher, and parent Rosa Barillas.
Barilla.
Barillas. It's because of their strong efforts, we can acknowledge and celebrate the advanced studies at Brando Middle School in Pico Union for something that they've been waiting for many years. During the past three years, Brando students have gained 91 API points in the California standardized test. A round of applause. Brando's outstanding algebra program has also been a model in the Los Angeles Unified School District. Children in our community can now be part of this innovative and challenging academic program that is specially designed for gifted and talented students. I want to thank Mr. Bolovski, Mrs....
Moises.
Moises, Tanya Willis, and Rosa Barillas, on behalf of the First District. I need to put this in the context. 9,273 per capita is what the average parent makes in this neighborhood. Forty-five percent of individuals in this neighborhood are living below the poverty line. Two of the most aggressive transnational gangs that dominate this country and a good part of many other countries started in these neighborhoods. Yet, these children are excelling, overcoming some very harsh environments, some very tough living conditions, many that are living two or three families in one-bedroom apartments. So these are the conditions that the children are surviving in, and these are the teachers and the parents that have made such a big difference. I recall back in the early 90s when I started as the deputy, that Brando Middle School was a very tough school. It was a school where kids had a hard time getting to and from their classes, let alone to and from their home. So it's changed dramatically, and it's great to see this type of achievement. So with that, I'd like to present this congratulatory certificate for such a great, great gift they've given our children, but more importantly, the hope and the future they're giving this city by being engaged, these youngsters, to be productive citizens for our society. So thank you so much. To present this to our principal.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Would you have a hand?
Thank you.
Like to share a few words with us, please?
Yeah, I'd love to. I would just like to thank the Council and Councilman Reyes for recognizing Brando. I also would like to say, put in a word for support and the importance of public education in this city, and because it is the future of our city. I'd most like to thank the 2,300 students at Brando and the 150 staff members who have dedicated themselves to the progress of these students and are determined to continue showing that when given the opportunity, our students can flourish and succeed and progress and compete with anybody. So again, thank you very much, and many thanks to the support that, of our teachers and students and our administration, I can't, my superintendent, Mr. Alonso, my director, Mr. Nemo. We really appreciate the support we get, and thank you.
Thank you so much. And last but not least, I want to thank my staff, Sylvia, and staff in my office for their support of our community and this relationship we've been able to build up. Any of us want to share a few words? We're all good. Thank you very much. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. I know Ms. Perry will be next, if we could just run through the agenda real quickly as she's making her way up. Mr. Cook, call the wall.
Alakon, Cardenas, Gruel, Haun, Weasel, Lavange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, White, West, and Zain, Garcetti, 11 members present and a quorum. Madam President?
First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Ms. Perry moves, Mr. Smith seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Those will be approved.
On irregular agenda, item one is an item notice for public hearing, and there is a card on that.
We'll hold that item then.
Items two through five are items for which public hearings have been held. On item two, the applicant requests a continuance to May 13th.
That will be continued to May 13th.
And for the record... And for the record, on item four, the City Clerk's Office has received community impact statements from the Greater Echo Park Elysian Neighborhood Council and the Silverlake Neighborhood Council, both in opposition to the proposal.
I was asked if we could call that item special. I had a couple of questions, I think we may move on to another.
That would leave Council with items three and five.
Anyone wish to call items three and five special? If not, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on items three and five, close the roll, and tabulate the votes. Eleven eyes. Thank you. Next item. Next items.
Items six through 17 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration. On item eight, there is a request to continue that matter to May 22nd.
That objection will be continued to May 22nd. I know we also wanna call item number six special. Mr. Garcetti, yes, Mr. Reyes?
Uh, pass me up, but can we call item five special?
Okay, we'll reconsider it and come back to it. Okay. I do have cards, Mr. Clerk, on items, well, eight now has been continued, so item nine, 10, 14. Any other specialists, colleagues? If not, Madam Clerk, please open the roll of remaining items, close the roll, and tabulate the votes. Eleven eyes. Thank you. If we could reconsider item number five, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate Eleven eyes. That'll be called special, Mr. Reyes. Do you wanna quickly do the special, just, I'm sorry, Ms. Perry, have we done just a minute, special meeting, real quick?
Uh, Madam President, there is still the continuation agenda.
Sorry.
And item 18 is an ordinance notice for public hearing, and there are cards on that matter.
Yes, we'll call that special.
And a substitute ordinance has been circulated.
We'll call that special, then.
You wish to take up the special meeting at this time?
Please.
Alec, Concardness, Gruel, Hahn, Weasel, Labanche, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosemal, Smith, Weiss, Westen, Zine, Garcetti, 11 members present and a quorum. Madam President.
First order of business.
Items 19 through 21 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration. There are cards on 20 and 21.
Okay, so item 19, then, will be the only item before us at this moment? And Mr. Parks also wants to call 20 special with the cards. You wanna call 19 special?
Please, thank you.
Okay, if we could, I think adjourn this.
Actually, you would recess the special, go back to the regular.
Okay, the 19, 20, and 21, then. Thank you. Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Today, I am joined by the founders of the Azusa Street Mission Historical Society, Reverend Fred and Wilma Berry. Over 100 years ago, William J.C. Moore, an Angelino and son of slaves who started the worldwide Pentecostal movement in the Azusa Street Mission located in Little Tokyo, what is now known as Little Tokyo. On the 100th anniversary of its founding, the City of Los Angeles recognized the mission's origins by establishing a plaque where it once stood. Since its commemoration, the Little Tokyo Monument has stood as a major cultural tourism venue for the City of Los Angeles and attracts thousands to its festival every year. It is a celebration of multiculturalism and pays tribute to our city's history. I have had the pleasure of opening this year's event, which celebrated the 103rd anniversary of the Pentecostal movement, and I am proud to represent the district in which Pentecostalism started. It is one of the many firsts for which this city is known for, and I wanna thank Reverend Fred and his wife, Wilma, for making sure that this happens year after year after year. Through their efforts, they have helped preserve the rich history of the Pentecostal movement, and by preserving our diverse history, it is an important goal, I believe, that we should recognize today. And so I wanna say thank you to Reverend Fred and to his wife, Wilma, and I would like for you, Reverend, if you would introduce all the folks you've brought with you here today, and just to say a few quick words.
Amen. Madam President, Council members, Councilman Jan Perry, we wanna say thank you. The Azusa Street Festival celebrates the historicity of the Azusa Street location in Little Tokyo and downtown LA. This past week, we received visitors from Belgium, Ukraine, Africa, and many parts of the United States. We conducted a heritage tour, connecting the dots of our history by visiting Azusa Street and the Biddy Mason home at Third and Spring. On Friday and Saturday, we conducted a webcast, which was watched by thousands around the world, and we fed the homeless, over 3,000 widows and homeless in downtown LA through donations from our partners. Our speakers presented to members of the church our need to partner with our city to bring justice to our community. So we're here to say we're partners with the city, we're here to help you. And lastly, our recipient of the William J. Seymour Award, this year, we're Pastor Sunday Adelija from the Ukraine, and Dr. Patricia Bailey Jones, who's here with us today. We're recipients of the William J. Seymour Award, which is our annual award now, along with the festival, and my wife and I wanna say thank you. And we brought Attorney Darren Jones here just to say a few words quickly that will clarify what we're doing.
City Council members, we just wanna thank you for supporting Azusa. They have been such an inspiration to the body of Christ. Azusa represents really another thrust for the body of Christ in bringing a level of justice and righteousness into the earth realm. And since this is an honorable body of men and women who are seeking justice, we believe that it is only appropriate that my wife and I, you know, support such an outstanding ministry that is endeavoring to do what God has called us all to do, which is to seek justice at every level. And so we want to thank you again for your support and all that you've done to help this ministry grow, and we want to encourage you to continue to support them in the future. Thank you.
You gonna read the proclamation?
We'll go in the back, take pictures.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Ms. Perry. Thank you all, congratulations. I'd like to now, if we could, we'll acknowledge Mr. Zine for our next presentation. While we're doing that, Mr. Clerk, there's been a request by Ms. Hahn's office to reconsider item number 13 from yesterday's calendar, and that we would then continue it to May 27th.
Yes, Madam President. For the record, that is Council File 09-0435.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on reconsideration of item 13 from yesterday's calendar, excuse me, Wednesday's calendar. Open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes. To all eyes, that item will be moved to May 27th. Thank you. Mr. Zine. Mr. Zine will be followed by Mr. Parks and then Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Madam President, and a beautiful presentation we are going to make on behalf of Councilmember Janice Hahn. Dr. Bresky is joining me, Doctor, Dr. Arnold Bresky. Very interesting history and career. Began his distinguished medical career at Albert Einstein College of Medicine in Bronx, New York, well, where I think Melrose Larry Green comes from. As an OBGYN, board-certified specialist in Southern California, helped craft the Bradley Natural Childbirth Method, which revolutionized bringing husbands into the delivery room. Delivered almost 10,000 babies. In 1978, the doctor and a handful of the world's most prominent physicians and others met in La Crosse, Wisconsin to start the Wellness Movement. In 1982, the doctor ran Wellness Week for Governor Brown as part of his medical team. Another major medical contribution came in 1980s when the doctor started one of the original hospice clinics in the San Fernando Valley. During the 80s, the doctor continued to train and lecture baby boomers and seniors on the principles of the Wellness Movement. Because there was no formal training available at medical school, hospitals, and universities, the doctor made it his mission to devote the second half of his medical career to brain health and caregiving as the senior population rapidly expanded. Senior population starts at what age, Doctor?
At 50.
At 50. Well, those of you, Mr. Parks, should listen closely to this. You're over 50. Over the past decade, the doctor has worked in the trenches with seniors and caregivers, teaching his specialized Brain Tune-Up Program. His patients and caregivers openly proclaim his program really works to improve memory scores, attention, and concentration. His unique nine-point brain tune-up concept incorporates art, music, brain exercise, physical activity, social activity, power nutrition, and much more. His evidence-based program slows the progression of cognitive decline by five years. This revolutionary, whole-person-centered care program is designed to both improve quality of life and reduce suffering. His community outreach and giving back continues on a daily basis as he offers free lectures and workshops at hospitals, community centers, universities, civic groups, churches, synagogues, and senior centers. Today, we're here to kick off Brain Health Month in the City of Los Angeles. The number-one public health crisis in our country is Alzheimer's disease and caregiving. The doctor handpicked over 30 illustrations drawn by his stage-two or more Alzheimer's patients who have never drawn before. The drawings show us firsthand what can be done to improve the quality of life and delay the effects of cognitive brain decline. He says creativity increases a person, creativity increases a person ages. We invite everyone to view his unique art exhibition, which is now on display upstairs in the bridge overlooking City Hall that runs between City Hall and City Hall East. Please welcome this amazing man, award-winning author, and preventive geratologist in the field of behavior neurology, Dr. Arnold Bresky, with us today. Doctor? All right, now teach us old people something.
I will try. One of the good news is that everyone can learn. First of all, let me first say, Councilman Dennis Zine, Councilwoman Janice Hahn, and all members of the City Council, I wanna first thank you very warmly for this humbling honor and is very kind. As a physician, all I am trying to do is increase quality of life, elevate society, and reduce suffering. This is actually my second time in this chamber. In 1982, I was at this podium, and I introduced the City Council to Wellness Week for Governor Brown, and Marvin Brown, he actually took me out to lunch that day. He couldn't believe what the Wellness Movement was about. This is what I do for the last 12 years. I've been in the trenches, and I've taken care one-on-one with over 2,000 Alzheimer patients. And today, I'm here to tell you that this is our nation's number-one public health crisis. Alzheimer's disease and caregiving will be bankrupting Medicare and every other government in America if we don't do something to slow and prevent its arrival, and my program will do that. In fact, Dr. Jonathan Fielding, who's the head of Public Health here in the County of Los Angeles, called a press conference in October 2008 and said, "As baby boomer generation ages, so does their risk for Alzheimer's disease." We must estimate that more than 325,000 baby boomers living in the country today are expected to develop Alzheimer's, disease during their remaining lifetimes. This will place a heavy burden, not only on family caregivers, but also our ability to provide health services and long-term care. I have been working on this problem for 12 years and wanna bring it to the City of Los Angeles. Why is this important? Because the treatment of Alzheimer patients costs three times that of regular elderly people. There are 5.2 million people today in America with Alzheimer's that will double in five years and will double again five years from then. If we cannot cure Alzheimer's, we must do risk management, and that's what I do. Ladies and gentlemen, I would love to come back someday and to bring you my long-distance learning program where we could bring my program to senior centers and to people's homes. We must do it. It's a moral obligation for everyone who lives in the City of Los Angeles. Thank you very much for your kind attention.
And I'd like to add that I have a calendar of events, Brain Tune-Up Events Calendar, and the doctor has been very kind in his program. He goes to Kiwanis Clubs, Rotary Clubs, Lions Clubs, many of the service clubs. If people are interested, contact one of your local clubs, and they can obviously get you booked for a presentation program. Madam President?
Thank you, and I just wanted to add my congratulations, Dr. Bresky. You've been an incredible asset to our city and what you've done, and for Mr. Zine and Ms. Hahn recognizing you today, welcome to our chambers again, and we hope to have you here again. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Zine. I'd now like to ask Mr. Parks for our next presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Today, we're very pleased to have a number of guests with us, and I'd like to ask them to come up. Bessie Fromm, Caesar Portello, Quentin James, Paco Ratana, Susie Davis, Ingrid Avila, and Elena Judd. And we're here to honor them and the work they do as it relates to the Children's Mental Health Awareness Day, which is today. We are certainly supportive of them as they promote a positive youth development, resilience, recovery, and transformation of mental health services, delivery for children, youth, and seriously mental health needs in our family. The Los Angeles Child Guidance Clinic, through its unique approach to serving children and adolescents, is effectively caring for the mental health needs of children, youth, and their families in our community. The need for comprehensive, coordinated mental health services for children, youth, and their family places upon the community a critical responsibility. Children's Mental Health Awareness Day raises awareness of the effectiveness of programs for children's mental health needs, demonstrates how children's mental health initiatives promote positive youth development, recovery, and resilience, and shows how children's mental health needs drive in their communities. The theme of this year's national event is thriving in the community with a special emphasis on how high school youth who receive the services they need are more likely to have positive outcomes, such as better grades, less likely to have negative outcomes, such as involvement in juvenile and criminal justice system. And we wanted to support them today in asking the City of LA to declare this as the Mental Health Day for youth. And I think what we find in our communities that's so important is that, in those communities that often have 50 to 60% of the community without health care. Health care is a major issue, but mental health is often not even considered as it relates to the needs of young people in the community. And so I would like to ask Mrs. Fromm to come up on behalf of the City of LA and all of the elected officials to present her with a certificate identifying today's date as the Mental Health Awareness Day for youth. Are you gonna be our spokesperson? Okay. Ms. Fromm, why don't you come up and make some comments? And also, we'd like you to comment on any activities or events that are upcoming.
Very good. Thank you so much, Councilman Parks and fellow council members for your resolution. We are truly honored that you have established a Children's Mental Health Awareness Day here in Los Angeles City, and which also recognizes the work of the Los Angeles Child Guidance Clinic. And I am very pleased to be joined by a very dedicated board member, Dr. Quentin James, who has been on our board for more than 20 years, and he began with us as a child psychiatry resident in 1966. So he has come full circle as a board member, board chair, and extraordinary volunteer, and also to be joined by the most dedicated competence stash that you could ever, ever, ever hope for. Thank you all so much. The resolution calls special attention to young people who are incarcerated or those who have dropped out of high school. But here are two pieces of data that I'd like you to remember. We hear about school dropouts, we hear about the, our overburdened juvenile justice system, but when we look at those with mental health disorders, fully 60% of incarcerated youth locally have a mental health-related problem. Most of them never received a diagnosis, never got treatment, never got help, and that's something we need to turn around. Of children who drop out of school, 44% of our seriously emotionally disturbed young people contribute to that dropout rate. While we may be looking at 20 or 22% dropout rate for the county as a whole, again, for children with mental health problems, it's more than double that. The good news is that increasingly, we know how to identify and intervene with very young children that have behavioral and emotional problems, and these are kids two, three, and four years old. And these are kids two, three, and four years old. We are able to diagnose depression in a three-month-old, believe it or not, infant mental health. Very new field and something that Dr. James has been involved with for some time. The cornerstone of the clinic's work is early intervention, and we have gone on to earn national recognition from the American Psychiatric Association, the American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry, from L.A. Unified School Board, and others for these Children's Mental Health Awareness Day puts the spotlight on effective ways we can support the positive social and emotional development of young children, which is foundational to their future well-being. Who knew that the expulsion rate among preschoolers is 3.2 higher than it is for kindergarten through twelfth grade? Children this little are expelled far more frequently for problem behaviors than those in kindergarten through twelfth grade. So, if ever there was an opportunity to think about what we could do differently before waiting for young people to be incarcerated or to drop out of school, this is a special occasion to really spotlight that issue. Thank you so much for recognizing the importance of working together to reverse the poor-life prospects that too many of our children are facing. Let me just share that every dollar invested in early childhood services saves three dollars in future public assistance costs. It's a very good return on investment. Last but not least, on Saturday, May 30th, we're hosting our 11th Annual Family Fund Fest. Come out, have the snow cones, ride the ponies. If you're older than twelve, I'm sorry, you can't do that. We have clowns and face painting. But as much as anything, we create access to health and mental health services for our community. Just go to our website at www.lac.org, and you will get all the details in both English and Spanish. Thank you all so much. We really appreciate it. And this will be at our 3787 South Vermont facility, which is just south of exposition. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. Appreciate it. Colleagues, we're now going to go to public comment before we go on to our items. I will call the following names. And if I could, we have a lot of noise in the council chambers. If you have conversations, shh. I ask that you go to outside the council chambers to have those conversations. Elliot Johnson, followed by Peter Burmeister out in the San Pedro area, followed here by Dr. Clyde Williams. Mr. Johnson?
Madam Chairman, Madam Chairwoman, excuse me. Members of the council, I'm aware that the city is undergoing a budget process. And as part of that process, you are considering the consolidation of various commissions. I'm here to request that you pay close attention at the excellence each commission and their staff provides to the city of Los Angeles. It would be a detriment to you and the city if we were to lose their skill and ability because of consolidation. So, as you go through the consolidation discussion, please remember that they are a valued asset to us all, and it would be excellent if you did not fix what's not broken. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here. Peter Burmeister in San Pedro?
Good morning, council members and President of council. My name is Pete Burmeister. I'm seventy-five years old and fighting for a community cause. Thank you to Janice Hahn for supporting our community at large for the good and quality of life. I'd like to report to you, we went before the Department of Water Power Commission in regards of our KNI training field matters. We're giving another thirty days' extension to resolve this matter with the Department of Water and Power. We have the support of the community at large, the KNI Association, the KNI Police Handlers, and we have hundreds of testimonials letters and support from the community and donation to keep on fighting. In due time, we will put it before your agenda for consideration. We are not a business. We are volunteers and voluntary to the community, helping kids today. They are the leaders of tomorrow. Council members, I'd like to report to you, an employee of the Department of Water and Power, a former police officer of Los Angeles, and now Director of Security for the department, approached the KNI officers for the school board in the lobbies and tried to influence them in this matter. After the public comments, he told the head, he called the headquarter of the school district and told the deputy chief, Ramirez, not to have KNI units to train at our facility. This is an issue, to this issue is resolved. His name is Patrick Finley. I think this is unfair in this, of this employee to do so. And on top of that, I'd like to announce that we have our KNI Association demonstration at Redondo Beach this weekend, Saturday, and I invite you all to come and see what our KNI handlers, all from California.
Thank you, sir. We just need, if you could.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Thank you for participating. Dr. Clyde Williams, followed by Lucy Caruso, followed by Mr. Sacks.
Dr. Clyde Williams, 40115 Burke Road, El Sereno. State Route 710 in El Sereno. We're reviewing it, and we have found that Caltrans has reported, at least in three public presentations, of their SR 710 gap closure geotechnical study, that the study is route-neutral and that evaluations will only be based upon the geotechnical information that they're gathering. But a year ago, Caltrans, in meetings with their various committees, had gathered eight different routes from various organizations, unspecified as to where they came from. They did not publish these on their webpage, and only in the South Pasadena webpage for 710 do they have them depicted in full glorious color. Again, a year ago, they also had developed ten evaluation criteria and parameters for the evaluation of the 710 gap closure. Only three of these criteria were geotechnically involved. The rest were based upon existing transportation facilities and traffic. More than, only in El Sereno have they, might say, concentrated their criteria and that they want El Sereno and the rest of L.A. to endure their proposed 710 gap closure. Who will it benefit? Alhambra and South Pasadena only. El Sereno will suffer the impacts, but they will not get any of the benefits. So, all we're asking for is have your Board of Public Works and your various council districts be aware of what's going on within Caltrans. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Lucy Caruso, followed by Arnold Sacks, followed by Walter Bechtel. And again, if we could ask all the staff to, please take their conversations outside.
Shh. Can you, can you hear me okay? Do you remember me coming here last, a couple of meetings, talking about all this hospital stuff I've been going through? And I'm really angry about something, and I keep going back to the sixties with this. I'm not from this state, and this state has this thing with the psychological psychiatric stuff that another state doesn't have. And I'm getting misdiagnosed because of this focus with this. I'm going to go back to women of the sixties. I'm going to say it very slowly. Talk about anxiety and depression. We're quick to prescribe drugs such as parbitolates or tranquilizers to calm them down, or amphetamines to pep pills to speed them through the day. By the mid-sixties, drugstores were filling over one hundred million prescriptions a year for various sedatives, antidepressants, or other powerful mood-controlling drugs. And when the tranquilizer Valium was invented in 67, the point I'm trying to get is what your doctors keep giving me, ma'am, is feel this patient would benefit from antidepressant therapy for depressive workup rather than focus on a medical condition.
Excuse me, Madam President. She doesn't appear to be speaking about an issue within the jurisdiction of the city.
Well, it's from your, your paperwork.
Thank you, Ms. Caruso. Mr. Arnold Sacks, followed by Walter Bechtel and Melrose Larry Green after that.
Good morning. Thank you. Arnold Sacks. With an opportunity on Wednesday for the city to set a precedent in its procedures and looking forward, they again fell flat on their face. I'm just talking about the Transportation Committee meeting that you had here regarding the high-speed rail. And the discussion that came up involved having the high-speed rail, the necessity to go from Union Station to Lawa. The federal government is giving you an opportunity to regionalize airport traffic in the area. High-speed rail to Ontario, high-speed rail to Palmdale. You can put every airline in those airports, but without appropriate method of getting people to go to those airports and having them take an hour, an hour-and-a-half trip to get to Palmdale or Ontario, nobody will want to fly out of there. Obligating the people to go to Lawa, to LAX from Union Station, why that route? How many stops on a high-speed rail line would you involve in L.A.? What's more important about that presentation is how did they manage to get an EIR, EIS report done by 2010? We've been waiting, the public, for an EIR, EIS report on the Wilshire Boulevard bus-only lane. When the hell is that going to be published? Find out the secret from the High-Speed Rail Commission on how they managed to get their EIR report done. Maybe they could let the city know how to get one done for Wilshire Boulevard. Finally, a chance to move forward, and you'll fall on your face again. That's really bad, terrible. It's a no, as Councilman Rosendahl would say, a no-brainer. Eliminate traffic on the 405? How will the high-speed rail help that at all? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bechtel, followed by, again, Melrose Larry Green, followed by Michael Carrion, and Yvonne Michelle Autry.
Okay. Thank you. I wanted to say, I was going over the videos again, and I noticed that last, yesterday, or Wednesday, after I said something about not mentioning where the location of somebody that were trying to find some witnesses about a murder on Langdon and Parthenia. I noticed it was mentioned, but I didn't quite, quite hear that. But the thing I wanted to say is that if we say something, you know, after we say something and we turn and we walk away from the podium, if one of the council members says something, we can't hear them as we're walking away from the podium. So, if you want to say something to us, it would be, I think it would be just fine if you said that while we were still standing up here at the podium. Also, I wanted to correct myself about mentioning that the Bechtel Corporation, my relatives, had something to do with the building of the Golden Gate Bridge? That's incorrect. They had something to do with the building of the Oakland Bay Bridge in 1937, or somewhere around in that area. It was another one of my relatives that was working on the Golden Gate Bridge, not the Bechtel people. The Bechtel people did, was part of the six companies that built the Boulder Dam, which is now the Hoover Dam. They did the bullet trains for UK. They did the tunnel and the BART and other things like that. But they didn't have anything that I could find anything to do with the Golden Gate Bridge. And the date on that, the finish of, the finish date on the Golden Gate was 1937. It wasn't 1915. So, I just wanted to mention, correct myself.
Thank you. Melrose Larry Green?
Good morning, everybody. My name is Melrose Larry Green, and I'm a proud member of the Savage Nation. A proud member of the Savage Nation. Every day at three o'clock, I am honored and thrilled to listen to every single word that comes out of Michael Savage's mouth. I agree with 120% of what Michael Savage says. Why am I here this morning? Because the Home Secretary of England has banned Michael Savage from entering England. And I am calling on the L.A. City Council this morning to pass a resolution supporting the right of Michael Savage to say what he wants. You don't have to listen to him anymore than I have to listen to you. But Michael Savage represents millions of Americans. You're looking at one right now. And you know Tom Labange and Jack Weiss. You're my, you're my councilman, and you're my neighboring councilman, Jack Weiss. And you know Michael Savage has been a big supporter of Israel and the Jewish people. And he's not a racist. He's not a homophobe. He's not a hater. Everything that Michael Savage has said is right. And I think that this council will set history. The whole country will be looking to this council. If you pass a motion supporting the right of Michael Savage to enter this country of England, he brings in a lot of money to the city of L.A. Many people that live in the city of L.A. might be next. I used to be on the radio with the same station as Michael Savage. I too am a Jew. I too am a broadcaster, and I don't want to be denied the right to travel to England because of my political points of view. So, Michael lives up in San Francisco. The San Francisco City Council will never pass this kind of resolution, but I am asking you, please, pass a resolution supporting Michael Savage. I can't wait till three o'clock today. Liberalism is a mental disorder. If you don't pass this resolution, then everything Michael Savage says about liberals will be confirmed. Thank you.
Thank you, Melrose Larry Green. Nice to see you last Sunday. Michael Carrion?
Yes, my name is Michael Carrion. Once again, I'm here about illegal parking that no one here has done anything about. Today, as I was coming down across the street in Los Angeles, a bus had to let two people off their bus with wheelchairs in the middle of the street. Mr. Wesson wants to be, I mean, excuse me, Mr. Weiss wants to run for city attorney, yet he sat here, I think, once in all the times I've been here and heard what I had to say, but he's never done anything about it. This happens to be in Jen Perry's district. She's never mentioned anything. When I talked to her office, they said they're not going to do anything. Police are who they are and what they are, and they're going to do what they want, when they want, legal or not. Mr. Labange says he's working on it. Mr. Labange should have put this on the, on the docket here, bring the police here, and let him speak in a public forum. Quit doing this behind closed doors so that they wait until something's done. If Mr. Labange is doing what he says he's doing, then let's open it up to the public. Let the public hear what they have to say. And in the meanwhile, have all these cars out the street. If you want to save money, any vehicle that is driven out of the city limits, put them in Pinto's or hybrids or something. Take them out of the large, humongous Crown Victorias while they drive all the way to Little Rock, while they drive all the way to Orange County on a taxpayer's dollar, Mr. Smith. Put them in small cars that are economical for them to drive out of the city, even out of the county. You can save a lot of money there. They're Pinto's. You probably owned one at one time or another, Mr. Alakon? I'm a Chevy man, but that's okay. Put them in a Toyota hybrid. Just get them out of the Crown Vics. Thank you.
Thank you. Yvonne Michelle Autry? Yvonne Michelle Autry?
Thank you, sorry for the delay. Firstly, and I was watching, I usually don't watch these telecasts, but I was watching on Wednesday night, and it appeared as if public comments had been edited out. I hope that you all aren't editing out public comments that you all don't agree with, because I think that that's biased, and I'm sure it's against the law. But again, just to, per record, we'd like to, again, draw attention to the fact that we appreciate Mr. Jack Weiss and his efforts to escalate the process and the resolution and examination of the DNA kits, and especially the outstanding rape kits. In not doing so, I hope that you know, especially in this month, which is supposed to be the National Prevention of Abuse Against Children's Month, you're sending a very strong message that rape is all right, you know, that it's kind of still a male-dominated society, or the good old boy system. And in not prosecuting these violent criminals, you're allowing these criminals to circulate free in society. And with the Safer Cities Initiative, quite possibly, if you would just investigate, identify, and apprehend these violent criminals for which you have their DNA, you could possibly rid Los Angeles of even a greater amount of violent criminals. I don't know if you're protecting possible undercover police officers, those within your own ranks, who still participate in some unpleasant, ungodly fantasy or ritual, but for me, I just don't understand what the problem is for seven years in not forcing the police department to perform its primary function, which is the identification and apprehension of violent criminals. Not only does that speak or reveal a level of incompetency, not only, I don't think that's just Mr. Weiss, I think that reflects badly on all of you. The primary function of the police department is to identify and to apprehend and to prosecute violent criminals, not just to police and to clean up a community of by and large addicted individuals who are broken-spirited and need more counseling, detoxification, and housing services. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Last public comment card, Matt Dowd on the San Fernando Valley. Van Nuys?
Yeah, thank you. It's good to be up here looking down on the city council chambers down there. First of all, Melrose Larry Green has got to be kidding. This city council, unless they're getting campaign contributions, they're not going to have a resolution for anybody. There's no free speech, there's no ideals anymore, this is pay-to-play. Look, all right, first of all, the clock's still on two minutes, I'm going on this clock right here.
No.
I went away for a couple of days.
Our clock says 1 minute 25 seconds, please keep going.
Oh, well, I'm going to need that clock, because I got no, just call it at 1 minute and at 30 seconds, and give me the 10-second warning, too. I went away for a couple of days, okay? I took a vacation. And yes, every day I was away, another pension board member resigned. So it's like 3 now, we worried about this. And now, Villa, it's going to lead back to the mayor, the city council, you know, there might be some vacant seats even pretty soon, and it's $7 billion. But here, look, I got bad news, and I got good news, and I got bad news. The bad news is for all the police and fire pension in the city of Los Angeles, and all your employees who've been contributing to that fund, they lost all your money. That's the bad news. But the good news is guaranteed by the general fund.
30 seconds.
Thank you, Wendy. It's guaranteed by the general fund. So you haven't lost the money, because you're getting it all back. But the bad news is the city of Los Angeles has to pay for that, every single taxpayer. That's why the parking meters have gone up.
10 seconds.
Everybody's out there, everybody's out there trying to write tickets for all these crazy things, you're doing a lot of bad, there's bad will and karma in the community. Nobody wants the city to be doing this.
Thank you.
But you took your eye off the board.
Thank you very much. Thank you. We're going to go to item number, excuse me, before that, Mr. Weiss, and then we'll go to item number five.
Thank you, colleagues. Um, Kelly, could you? Do I need, do you want to say my? I just wanted to announce, colleagues, today, that I'm very proud that Kelly O'Rourke, who's worked with me for many, many, many years, and done everything in our office, and has been here on the council floor, will be joining the other side of the horseshoes soon, going to work for Mr. Parks. And I just want to thank Kelly, our office is here, because we knew this was happening, and you didn't, and we wanted to just mail you a little bit. And we're just very, very proud of Kelly. It's great gain for Mr. Parks, for the budget staff, and for your district. And I'm just trying to think of a polite way of saying this, but, Madam President, we now have a DNA mole in the budget and finance staff. Yes! Congratulations, Kelly.
Thank you. Congratulations, Kelly. And congratulations, Mr. Parks. Mr. Labonge?
For an introduction, real quick, members, let's welcome a fine family from the Simi Valley and Pomona area, please stand and be recognized by the council, as well as some international visitors from Gieberg, Germany. Welcome to the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Welcome to the council chambers. Mr. Reyes, item number five.
Thank you, Council President. With colleagues, I rise to speak number 5-1. I want to thank Councilman Garcetti for his leadership, but I felt it was important to raise this issue so that we can demonstrate that as a city, we are raising our standards and dealing with our environmental impacts as we grow as a city. This item came before planning land use and management twice, and you had the Bureau of Engineering working on this effort. I want to thank them, because we are in a place where we instituted LEED standards on city buildings, then we developed the green buildings ordinance for the private sector. Now, in addition to pursuing LEED for neighborhood development pilot projects, I'm working to develop an ordinance for green retrofit of existing city buildings, while increasing the standard for new city construction to LEED Silver. So this instructs Department of Water and Power to work with BOE to develop an MOU for all new construction over 7,500 square feet or larger to install photovoltaic, paid for by Department of Water and Power. The implementation date for the LEED Silver report is to be postponed by six months, from July 1st to 2009 to January 1st, 2010. But in this process, we have some strong leaders within the departments. I want to thank Deborah Weintraub for her hard work, our city architect, Manud Karzimzad, Karim Sadeh, I forget, I'm sorry for my mispronouncing your name, Zora Akter, and Sean Farzan. So again, this was important, colleagues, to share with you, and for the audience, that we are doing our efforts to make this happen.
And they're being very shy, standing on the side over there of the columns. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Reyes, for your support and leadership on all things going green, from your pioneering work on our green roofs program, to what you've shepherded through Plum here. And thank you for making amendments as well. It shows that we can continue to move on solar without having to go through kind of some of the somersaults that we're looking at in other solar programs, that put solar panels on every single building should be, which we've done on many, which will become standard for all of our public buildings. We are the first big city in America to require all our buildings GO LEED, which is Leadership and Engineering Environmental Design, essentially green buildings. And it was a really important thing that we did here. We were actually recognized by Mikhail Gorbachev and the International Green Cross, received an award for being one of the first cities through the affiliate of his organization here called Global Green USA, and we thank them for their help. This is the next step of going all the way up to the silver level, that we now have, I think, the largest number of certified buildings. We have started, finished, and/or certified 51 buildings throughout the city that have or will at least meet this threshold, from a LEED Platinum, Lakeview Terrace Library, to what we're seeing open up soon in Silver Lake, which will be, I believe, a gold-certified library as well. And that was six years ago. This represents about $900 million in new green construction in the city. That means jobs, it means a healthier environment, it means less resources consumed, about 1.5 million square feet. Studies show that green buildings people are actually more productive in, they're happier in, the lighting is better, the circulation of the air is better. And when a lot of talk about a new green economy, there's a lot of plans that people have, whether it's legislation coming out of Washington, whether it's in other places. We don't look at that as something of the future. We have been involved in the green economy right here. So currently, of the 51 buildings, 31 are targeted to be LEED Silver or better, but this would require all-new construction to meet that requirement, as Mr. Reyes mentioned. We're going to further reduce our carbon footprint, we're going to send less waste to our landfills. In fact, in America, double-digit percentages in our landfills are just our construction materials, and we forget to recycle. We knock down buildings when there are all sorts of building materials that can be salvaged from there. And there's a number of instructions of various departments in here also that require green cleaning techniques, a tracking of our energy waste and water savings. And because of that, I think it's really important that we not just design buildings well, but that we make sure that the use of the buildings is good, because you can have a green building and someone can leave the faucet on there for days on end, and it no longer is a green building in terms of its output. And I'll just close again by thanking Mr. Reyes, but also, we met with our new Energy Secretary, Dr. Chu, in Washington, DC, and he challenged us to go to the next level. He was very impressed with this. He said, "Now you have to measure output, not just design," which is something we're doing here. And I think that because of that, we're going to be able to track a lot of those stimulus dollars to show that we're leading the way as well. So I urge an eye vote, and thank you, Mr. Reyes, for your help on this, too.
Mr. Rosendahl?
Thank you, Madam President. Could I ask the department to come on up and talk us through this a little bit? This is really great. I mean, to see a spreadsheet, Mr. Labonge, that really sets timetables and procedures. Apparently, we have done 50 buildings already, you know, and thanks to President Garcetti, and obviously the Plum Committee with Mr. Ed Reyes, and Mr. Weiss, and Mr. Weesar, and Mr. Labonge, and all of what he does, and Mr. Smith with his commitment, Mr. Parks over there. This is really a council effort here going forward. And to have a chart that actually lays it all out is very good. What time is it now? Good morning, still.
Good morning.
Could you give us a quick update on this stuff? And I know there's a technical thing you want to clear up as well.
Yeah, I'm Deborah Weintraub, Chief Deputy City Engineer. I'm an architect and a LEED-accredited professional. And I actually would point out to you that we actually have 53 projects now.
Ah, very good.
In the process, and since the report was written, there are 20 that have received their certifications at various levels. We were, with the council action, we were a leader in this effort, and by taking this step, we've brought along the whole design and engineering community, and we're getting better and better at producing green buildings. And the Bureau of Engineering is happy to, very happy to have been asked to take the lead in this effort.
Do you want to make a comment, please?
Certainly. Zora Akter, Bureau of Engineering, Architectural Division. I'm also an architect, and we're very pleased to be, to see that our mandate, which was the city of LA's mandate, was one of the first mandates to have in the country, and to go to the next level, to increase our threshold.
Perfect. Did you want to add to it?
I just want to thank Zora, she did most of the work. I'm Sean Farzan, with Bureau of Engineering.
Get me the mic.
I'm Sean Farzan, with Bureau of Engineering, and I'm, again, happy to be here on this occasion, and thank you for all your help, all the council members.
Okay, first a big question. How many buildings overall are we talking about getting done, and what timeframe?
Okay, we're talking about getting, at this point, 53 projects done, but we're adding projects.
And how many government buildings do we have altogether that would be in this catalog over the next 10, 15 years?
I couldn't predict how many will be in the catalog. I think there are about 500 buildings that the city--
There are 500 buildings that the city has.
That the city of LA has, right.
Okay. And we're in the first 100, is what I want to say, of the 500.
That's right.
Next question. Federal stimulus bucks, any kind of play coming out of Washington, obviously it creates jobs, too, climate, 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 new day. Do we see ourselves getting some of that recovery money?
My understanding is that the Department of General Services is interested in trying to get federal stimulus dollars for renovations, energy-efficient renovations.
Well, obviously, Mr. Garcetti's chair of that committee, as we all are on it, we obviously want to be clear that federal money should be coming to these projects, because it's obviously jobs, and it's obviously good for the environment. It's a win-win-win for everybody. I want to thank you all for doing it. Thank you, Madam President, for that.
Thank you very much. And if I wasn't safe to ask questions, but I do want to thank you for the wonderful senior center that we're doing, which I think will be the first senior center that's going green in the city.
In LA, yes.
In LA.
Yes.
Which we're very excited about in Sherman Oaks. So it's being built as we speak, so we'll be able to celebrate that. But thank you for your leadership on this. I'm glad Mr. Reyes called it back special so we could have this conversation and let everyone know the good things that you're doing. With that, Madam Clerk, if you could open the roll on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the votes. Be 12 eyes. We did, unfortunately, two speaker cards we did not have up here for Van Nuys for the public comment. If we could ask Mark Hurd in Van Nuys, and then Dr. Daniel Weisman.
Good morning, Mark Hurd. Thank you very much for passing that. I love that. I came here, I guess, a couple of weeks ago and spoke about, you know, environmental stuff and green, and it's--
And, Mr. Hurd, I apologize, we don't have a timer out there working, so we'll let you know. It says two minutes, we'll let you know when you get down, we'll give you an extra five seconds here.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
So, thank you very much. I'm so proud of all you guys. I don't know if I can say names, but Bill Rosendahl, thank you, Gruhl, all you, you're doing terrific work. A couple of issues I just want to speak briefly on. The neighborhood council proposal to cut to about 11,200. I sent a letter to Parks, if you could just move, tread lightly on these neighborhood councils, they do so much good work. I know we're in a budget crisis, we absolutely have to cut, everybody gets that, but please, move, move carefully. I would suggest 20%, maybe even 25, but you take them down to 11,200 a year, and they've barely got enough money to rent the PA system and put grapes on the table, let alone do so many good things that they do for the schools and everybody else. So you guys are doing a lot of good stuff up there, and I'm very proud of this council. But, and I know it's a tough time right now with the economy, but please, go lightly on the neighborhood councils, they do so much good work, and there's a lot of great people on these councils. Thanks again.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd. Dr. Weisman?
It doesn't have to be one side.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. To all the council members, the May 5th meeting of the Business and Finance Committee was astounding. I think what you've done in this drop of funding for the neighborhood councils, from $50,000 down to less than $10,000, is going to really decimate the neighborhood councils. I think it's even more than Mr. Smith could have ever hoped for. I'm glad to see in today's news that the chair, Ms. Gruhl, is interested in restoring some of this. I think we're ready, and most of us neighborhood councils are ready to participate in the sacrifice necessary to these standard 10, and perhaps somewhat more. But the original use of these funds was to buy office equipment, office space, and office supplies. By and large, it has not been used for that, it's been used for outreach, to bring more people into city government, and to bring more events to our communities. If you did bring us down this low, that will stop, and that defrays and supplements the activities of other departments, so that we're really earning our money when we're dispersing it. And I hope you will reconsider this very seriously very soon. Thank you again for the accommodation of allowing us to speak here today.
Thank you very much. We do have one, we'll allow them to speak, although we had closed public comment, we just received these other cards prior to the close of public comment. Michael Hubman?
Weren't you in that meeting? Didn't you--
My name is Michael Hubman, and I'm a human rights and homeless rights activist, and I am speaking to you as a member of the CASI, the Coalition for the Abolition of Safer Cities Initiative. Today, I'd like to talk about Dante's Inferno. Recently, I heard Councilmember Perry on national public radio compare pre-Safer Cities Initiative, Skid Row, to Dante's Inferno. I believe that she lifted that turn of a phrase from the director of one of the major missions, and the occasion was the Police Commission hearing on Safer Cities Initiative, November 18th, 2008. I think that the comparison is ridiculous. During the first two years of Safer Cities Initiative, the sovereign loosened an unprecedented wave of enforcement activity on the residents of Skid Row, Los Angeles. In the 50-block area, a dedicated police unit made over 18,000 arrests, most for nuisance infractions. This same group made over 24,000 citations-- This same group made over 24,000 citations for nuisance reactions and infractions in the same period. This great exercise in selective enforcement tallied up more arrests and citations for the kind of infraction than the rest of the city combined. I would like to suggest that the new address for Dante's Inferno is the Twin Towers Jail. Furthermore, the use of Dante's Inferno to describe the residents of Skid Row, Los Angeles, literally demonizes poor people and the homeless. Shameful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That will close our general public comment. I think we're going to take up four and six together. If there's no objection, we'll go ahead and take those two up. They're called "Special" by Ms. Gruhl. I'd like to recognize her at this time.
Thank you. And, Mr. Weisman? On item number, item number four, I know, I think my staff's here with you. We had some questions, just on this, and they've done extraordinary work on this reorganization. And the committee has done a lot of discussion. We talked about item four and six coming together because this morning in the Ad Hoc Recovery Committee, that there was a discussion that now there's going to be money coming forward for additional supplemental kind of funding for a variety of programs. If I could ask the department to come up, and I'll try to be brief on this item, and we've talked a little bit to you as well. Colleagues, we heard a few weeks ago, representatives who are here, and Mr. Garcetti's district, I know he's been working with them from Hilltop, that are here, as well as those from, represented the West Side Living Center on Disabled Issues. And my question goes to the core of changing. When you read the document, and even the document this morning that was provided to Ad Hoc Recovery, says that childcare and disability are not part of the core essential services of the Human Services Program, and that they should be funded by supplemental kinds of programs. And through the years, kind of knowing that the City of Los Angeles actually has played a role in childcare and disabled services and wanting them to be part of the core services. Now, it was heartening to know that this morning you say you're going to have some amount of money that can be, you know, eligible for that. But my challenge, and maybe you can help me through this and help probably the people from the organizations that are here, is if it's deemed, if childcare and disability are deemed non-core essential services, when we go forward, they're not going to be part of that. And they're never, neither of those services will be directly at the location that you've identified on those 21 centers. So if you can explain to me how we ensure that they're part of the core services and are eligible for that, they may be funded through the supplemental, but I don't know if there's a way to work this out that provides the same. Yes, yes, you can, Mr. Weisman.
President, it's my understanding, Ms. Gruhl, that you were interested in us just amending it so that they would fall under the core.
Yes.
So why don't we just-
You okay with that?
Why don't we just-
He always cuts to the chase. I had a-
And we just introduce your motion.
I will verbally do this, and you'll second it for me.
I definitely will. I'm very supportive.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Weisman. I said, "He knows much more than I do about this." So what we would like to do is amend the instructions to instruct the committee to modify this RFP to include childcare and services for the disabled as core services to be provided in the redesigned human service delivery system. You all right with that?
Second.
Okay.
All right. If that will be accepted as friendly without objection. We have two other speakers on the queue. Do you want to say anything more, Ms. Gruhl?
No, no. I think that was it. And I do think it is important that the group that knows here, that there is two, some, several million dollars that is in item six, that will provide money that's going to help supplement both the core services as well as the supplemental services.
Correct. And we had, in committee this morning, for the folks that are here, some of the folks from the Coalition and Hilltop and others, there's, in the Ad Hoc Committee this morning on Economic Recovery and Reinvestment, a larger grant of our Community Services Block Grant monies was received by the city than what was anticipated. Doesn't put us out of the woods forever, but it certainly addresses for this coming year, and the language that Ms. Gruhl introduced, reinserts childcare and disability as something where there's a core function of the family services support. So that's kind of a translation of what we just did to let you know and make sure that that's restored. So thank you for your activism on this, and we really appreciate your words on that. Mr. Reyes is our next speaker.
Thank you, Council President. And as I look at this process, I know it's very delicate. I know it's an issue in which we're trying to create a balance. As we spread out the very limited block grant dollars throughout the city, I wanted to put forth the idea of different areas will have different potential in attracting private sector dollars to complement some of these centers. And it's great when it happens in areas that can actually have the capacity to produce these dollars, while other areas just don't. It just doesn't happen because the funds aren't there, the resource base, the income groups don't exist, where they have that type of funding, whether through their philanthropy, through individual gift-giving. So as a person who's trying to see how we can balance out the allocation of funds, I'd like to ask the chairpersons of the committees, if we are able to look at a system and get a report back, that when these funds are being delivered from the private sector, can we also allocate those equitably in as much as we are sharing our block grant funds so that we do not create more despair for areas that just don't have those socioeconomic capacities to provide funds and minimize the imbalance that the city has seen for so many years? Are the chairpersons amenable to that? That's a question to Councilmember Weisman and to Councilwoman Gruhl, that's a report back you would feel comfortable attaining. Councilwoman Weisman? Councilwoman Gruhl?
Yep. Mr. Weisman? Has that accepted then?
Oppose the question one more time.
Yep.
I'm not sure it was heard. We are right now contemplating a report back on-
Hold on one second. Hold on a second. Ms. Gruhl? Go ahead, Mr. Reyes.
This is a verbal amendment. I'm putting it on the table, and I'm asking our chairpersons if this was appropriate, if it would be appropriate at this time. We have done a great job dealing with a very sensitive issue of distributing limited block grant funds throughout the city. We also know that many of the block grant funds will be leveraged and matched with private sector dollars that are donated by individuals, by philanthropic groups. We know that there is a section of the city that does not have that capacity, that we do not have the ability to raise the funds that other parts of the city can and will fund. My question to you is, should we get a report back so that we can also distribute those funds equitably amongst the 16, given the imbalance that does exist? Because there are, there's no way parts of East L.A., Northeast and South Center's going to raise the kind of private dollars that you'll see in more affluent areas. And those affluent areas will be able to leverage the limited block grant funds that have been allocated throughout the city. And we'll report back to see what system we can create so that the private funds are also distributed equally, so that we do not further the imbalance.
There's no objection to that.
That's a yes?
Yes.
Do I have a second for that amendment?
Sure. Second it.
Okay.
And that'll, without objection, that'll be accepted as friendly amendment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Parks, and then Mr. Labonge. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like, and thank you for bringing that up. And I think also, in addition to the private funds, what also impacts us is that the disparity in Quimby funds that sit in pockets of money throughout the city on the affluent areas, yet we're sharing general fund dollars equally or block grant funds. I'd just ask also for Mr. Weisman, is that, as we move forward, expecting the other 20 million to come in? On this report on May the 8th, there is an ability to add funds to two operations that have pockets of poverty, while many parts of the city have buckets of poverty. And so, in giving them the full array of dollars for their operation, in effect, we're making them equalize with people that have significantly higher rate of poverty, and yet we're giving the same amount of funds and everybody's having a full-blown operation to deal with it. Admittedly, you could leave one community and go to another center. The problem is, most of us know that centers only are not only, they generally serve better the communities what they're in. So the fact that we're going to CD 11 and giving a full operation and then CD 3, they have pockets of poverty. These other communities where that money will be, is getting moved from, have buckets of poverty. And we just hope that we use that CDD, basically the performer as relates to poverty, as a basis of the future 20 million, because that's where, really, how we get the money in the city. We go to the federal government, we say, "Look at all this poverty." We get it, and then sometime it gets spread a little farther than the poverty. And so that's all I'd ask as we go forward.
Mr. Labonge?
Thank you. I appreciate every word they're saying. I appreciate having a study here. But people from all over the city help out all over the city. It's not just, and I disagree with the Quimby on the issue there, Mr. Parks. I don't want to see it. I want to have a study on it. I got that, but you mentioned that.
What I said, I don't think it should be spread. I think it should take into account as we're using city dollars.
Absolutely. But the same, too, on title schools and education. There are schools that are title schools that get significant extra money that schools that are not title schools don't get. There's a whole, and there's a whole imbalance on a lot of funding on this issue. So I think there's a good, robust discussion that needs to take place here. And also, that those who are, come from other parts of the city, do participate in programs to help community groups. I went to Greg Boyle's Dinner, and many of the people at Greg Boyle's Dinner were from my district, who support Greg Boyle. Greg Boyle grew up in the Wilshire area, okay? There's a, there's a great give-back that many people have who live in the 4th District and other districts. So I don't want to think that it's just, there's no possibility. There are opportunities that we have to empower people to create 501(c)(3), to find ways to drive dollars to them as it has been organized in other parts of the city. So I don't want to say, if people, it's an easy, it's an easy thing to say, whatever comes in the door, you cut it up whatever way it is. I think there's got to be some study to it so we don't defeat the effort, the people who have been successful for whatever variety of reasons and do give back, that if they have a direction to give back, that it's given to where they have, whether it's a hospital, whether it's Sister Alice Marie, or somebody else at Meals and Wheels, or some other group that's here. So I just, it's a, it's a very important discussion that I look forward to in the future. And I do want to thank Mr. Garcetti and your help. I met with the Hilltop people there who feel that they have not been heard, which is so important. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we do have a substantive change in the amendment, so we will reopen the public hearing. With folks' indulgence and understanding, we're just going to do one minute per speaker because we have about 15 cards or so. But hopefully, it'll be reflecting some good news. So I'd like to start with the first speaker, Angela Ru. And after that will be Cynthia Augustine.
Roa.
Sorry?
You always call me Angela Ru. It's Roa.
Roa. It's because I always look at it.
Thank you very much.
Perdóname. Roa.
As a program director at Hilltop Nursery School and a member of the Coalition of the Community for Ownership, I am, I'm not convinced that this proposal, the original proposal, is an appropriate one. However, I just want to tell you that we do appreciate all the effort here to include a special needs service and childcare early education as a core service to the community. I guess you're all very busy. And I just want to remind everybody that early childcare education is directly connected to a family economic stability, school success for children, as well as long-term physical and emotional well-being for children and their families. I want to thank all the council members that took their time to listen to our concerns and all the mobilization by the parents and all the members of the NAPS. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Roa. Cynthia Augustine is next. After that is Stephanie Regal. Good to see you.
Our good afternoon.
Afternoon.
Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak. And I just want to say how overjoyed we are that things are turning and that we are going to make a concerted effort to be working with South L.A. and other impoverished areas. I can't explain how important early education is for me and my two sons, one who is graduating this year. And as a working mother, I do not think that I would be able to straddle both worlds of working and caring for my two sons without Hilltop's help. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Alacon wanted to know who was there at the podium with you, but we'll get the name later. Stephanie Regal. And after that is Sarah Mortimer Boyd.
Hi. Sorry, I have a cold. So this is my daughter, Harper, and my second. I feel like Councilman Weisman with the puppy, because in my case, I'm trying to save my children and my family. This is a full-time job. Saving our school and our community has become a full-time job. We've been in a meeting every other day for the past two months, many of which are with some of you. My one message is, if you vote on the proposal as yes, have you really read it? The one-stop-shop model is a mistake. Malcolm Baldrick's corporate assessment as a measurement of success is an even bigger mistake. Localized services have been excluded. You're working on that, but, you know, we're not really seeing it coming down the pipeline, so I hope that we do. CDD is not ready to launch this system. Vote no, keep the system for one more year, keep it for one more month. I mean, figure it out before you come with something sort of, you know, put together. Please, stop putting up walls, stop the political games. We need transparency. We need long-term solutions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sarah Mortimer Boyd is next. After that is Bretton Boyd. Good afternoon.
Hi, I'm Sarah Mortimer Boyd. I'm from Hilltop Nursery School. I've been here before. I realize the tenor has changed after your wonderful efforts today. Thank you. But I would agree with Stephanie to say, you know, before voting, make sure you have read this proposal thoroughly and given yourself the chance to analyze it and reflect upon the impact it'll have on all of the communities, including those that you want to help. The one-stop-shop model is flawed. The reason we are so passionate about what we are fighting for is because these institutions are part of our community. We have ownership of them. That's what South L.A. needs. They don't need a one-stop-shop model. We can provide wonderful examples, models, and advice for how to make that happen in other neighborhoods around Los Angeles. We don't receive money from private organizations to run. We do it as parents, and working, poor working parents are a part of the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boyd. Mr. Boyd? And after that will be Nona Brolin.
Hi. My name is Bretton Boyd. I'm a parent at Hilltop Nursery School and part of the community of, Coalition of Community Ownership. I just want to say thank you so much. It's been entirely inspiring this morning, based on your response to us and this very powerful amendment, because this, wow, I'm just, I came in here ready to get crazy on a number of issues. But I'd like to thank Perry, Labonge, Rosenthal, and Wendy Gruhl very much for seeing us and listening to us. Darn, I wish I could be more articulate. Basically, I've been a teacher for 10 years. Seven of those were in Watts, in Jordan High School. So I am deeply committed, and the number of parents I speak to daily are deeply committed to revivifying and making our communities throughout Los Angeles whole. We have that model in place with the infrastructures that have been growing for 20 years, and we need to take that in resource and in every capacity we can down and help everyone build up their community. Thank you.
Thank you, Bretton. Appreciate your testimony and your activism. Nona's next, and then Betsy Chapman will follow. Nona's next, and then Betsy Chapman will follow.
Hey, my name is Nona Boerma, Director of Playgroup, also known as Echo Park, Sub relate People's Childcare Center. And I'd just like to say that all the council members, thank you for really listening to us, and also the representatives from HSDS for listening to us and making every effort to help to secure our funding. And I'd also like to know that we would like to offer our services to all the other core services around the city. We can help you too. And I think that's it. And I really believe that childcare is key to a family's advancement, economic advancement, and people with disabilities, when given the opportunity, can become very productive members of our society. Thank you.
Betsy Chapman.
Hi, my name is Betsy Chapman, and I'm a mom at Hilltop, as well as a member of the Coalition for Community Ownership. And I still want you to vote no on this proposal. I appreciate the amendments, and I think they're fantastic for what they are, but this proposal is going to be ineffective, and we can make it effective. We can redesign the redesign with you, if you allow us to do this. Please know what you're voting on today. Read it, understand it before you vote yes on this, because we have better solutions. We have, we are organizations that are working well within the community and have been, many of us for years and years and years. We want you to know that we can, we are willing to come to the table and help you. And it's not just Hilltop, but many organizations within, in the community, different kinds of organizations that provide all kinds of services. Please, please reconsider this proposal. Thank you.
Matthew Kennedy.
Thank you, council members. Again, I want to express my gratitude for the debate on this issue. I am from Hilltop Nursery School, a parent and operations director. And I'm, again, I want to thank you for those who have taken your time to meet with us and read our letters expressing our concerns with the proposed redesign. And again, like Betsy, I would urge you to educate yourself, those who haven't been educated on the subject, since every client that the CDD is proposing that they help, it will be displacing or eliminating services to just, to as many clients who currently receive a wider variety of services. And these new one-stops, they're calling family source centers, yet in this new design they are excluding from their core services, something that every family needs, and that is affordable childcare, while they work towards self-sufficiency. We are here on behalf of the nonprofits, the neighborhood councils, and the constituents of your council districts who are saying no to this proposal design. Thank you again.
Keith Miller.
I just wanted to thank the council for listening and making the amendments to the contract. It's important that we recognize people with disabilities, and that should not be excluded as part of the redesign plan. Just when you consider your vote on the redesign plan, there are some flaws in it, and it really needs to be looked at before you vote yes on this. One-stop centers are difficult, they make it hard for people with disabilities to get into, and they are not necessarily community-based. So please just keep that in mind prior to your vote. Thank you very much.
Lori Mackay. Sir, if you want to speak, please do.
My name is Steve Clement. I'm here as a person who lives and works in Los Angeles. I have had a disability since birth, and I'd like to indicate really quickly, first of all, my appreciation for the amendment this morning, but secondly, my opposition to the redesign plan, because the one-stop centers that the council's considering would provide disability services supposedly to people who need specific services from people who may or may not be aware of disabilities at all. The current situation would be more effective, because the constituency that the one-stops might be serving would not necessarily have the expertise in the disability arena that the current folks would have. So we'd ask that you oppose the, the plan as it's written. But again, Councilman, we'll thank you for the amendment this morning.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Laura Mackey, and I would like to thank you also for the amendment today. I too am against the proposal that was before you earlier. I have been disabled my whole life, and I have tried to receive services from people without disabilities, even now recently. Had to go to ER, and no one there knows how to handle anyone with a severe disability. Putting all the services in a one-stop center would be detrimental to those people with disabilities, also as a foster parent, to 25 children, and those children also have special needs and would not be served by a one-stop center. And thank you again for reconsidering this motion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Deborah Levy. Arlene Foreman. And Ruth Kowalski.
Good afternoon, I'm Deborah Levy, the Executive Director of Community Care at Home and Lead Agency for the FDN on the West Side. We'd like to thank the council so very much for acknowledging the poverty that is on the West Side, and we are in full support of the redesign plan. And again, thank you so much for acknowledging the poverty in the plan.
Thank you.
I'm Adine Foreman, I'm with Jewish Vocational Services. We have two workforce centers, one in Marina Del Rey and one in Mid-Willshire. We are a part of the West Side FDN, and we'd like to thank the city council for their leadership on this issue and taking care of all of the city and the needs of those who are going to be accessing the FDN. Just so that you know, we are seeing record numbers at our workforce centers and in all of our programs all across the city, so we do appreciate, you know, what happened today and the vote. Thank you.
Hello, I am Ruth Kowalski. I'm currently the Program Manager for the FDN, and I also just want to echo the thanks of everybody on the West Side for acknowledging that there is a need all throughout the city, that the poverty is affecting everybody everywhere, and we believe this redesign plan is going to help us address, along with the other service agencies in our area, the growing record numbers of homeless and low-income people in Los Angeles. So thank you again.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Parks?
President, I just wanted to clarify on earlier your statement. My intent to make you the comment had nothing to do with spreading everybody's Quimby funds. All I was saying, if you have Quimby funds, traffic mitigation dollars, private donations, we need to take that into consideration when we're spending our dollars, such as general fund, block grant money, because everyone doesn't share in the benefits of development that brings Quimby and traffic mitigation, and then have people able to then buy a park or sponsor a park. So we're saying, when we use our general fund, take that into consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Parks, and thank you, Mr. Reyes, for that insight as we spoke on the side. Mr. Garcetti. Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you again, colleagues, for all the hard work on this. And a special thank you to the activists who have been tirelessly coming to city council meetings. You have jobs, you have families, you have other things. You didn't expect to be doing this, I know, this year, and the time that you've spent to make sure that this is changed for the better. But I hear you loud and clear, too, not fixed all the way from what you're saying was accomplished. I just want to thank everybody from Hilltop. I want to thank everybody from Echo Park, from Playgroup. I want to thank everybody from Atwater Village, and then the wider coalition that you brought in citywide as well. It was extremely impressive. It was the way that activism should occur. I, I want to say two things. One, I want to make a motion, which actually enables us to accept the grants. That's on number six here. So to move that CDD has given the authority to submit the ARRA CSBG, and I'll translate what that means, the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act Community Services Block Grant Plan to the state of California. This is money that's given to us, it should be signed off on, so we're not applying for money to see if we get it. We're telling them how we're going to spend the money that we do have, and that's in a way that would help us stay alive for at least another 12 to 18 months with these core providers that have been so talented and done such a great job. The due date is May 11, 2009. The local plan has been prepared based on the draft implementation plan identified. So it would be move, and Mr. Weston, as our great chair, has seconded that. I want to say is one last thing. In terms of redesigning the redesign, and I said this in committee, I think, to many of you too, I remain skeptical but willing to take at least a step. But that step I will only take, and now I'm willing to take it today, if we're protecting what is already working and working well. I'm not against one-stop centers being a part of a solution, but the, as the only part of the solution, workforce centers, which have to do with job training, work very well as one-stop shops. One-stop shops for families don't. There has to be a combination of things. They have to be a piece of them, but not the only solution. So as long as we're able to keep going and maybe even expanding that which is working in providing those core missions, whether it's disability services, whether it's childcare services, families need those things as much as anything, as well as perhaps concentrating some things that work well. And I think you guys said it great, which was, if the city recognized the problem that we don't have enough oversight and accountability, that doesn't mean we should be blowing up what we have and creating something else, a new. What it means is that we should be doing a better job with accountability and oversight with what we have. And I know we have limited resources. And I know we have limited resources, and the Community Development Department tries to struggle with those limited resources to keep things accountable, because that's what we have to do with taxpayer money. You all agree with that as well. And we, we can do a better job, but with this resolution today and with this stimulus money that goes forward, we will be able to keep these programs going. But you have my word, that as we're looking at what the redesign implementation is like in this coming year, if it doesn't begin to bear the fruit that it says it will, we have to look at making sure that the solution next year is not just a one-time fix, but going back to something that actually continues to work, at least for those people that it's serving here today, represented by you. So thank you all very much. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President, and I do appreciate the clarification I had with Councilman Labange, because I do believe that the major nexus here is how we receive federal funds and where we qualify for it, and what areas actually generate the level of need that actually allows us to get these funds. The notion here really is, how do we create that nexus, that link with those needs, where the resources we can generate citywide? It does not mean we take away the opportunity for anyone to offer resources, to contribute to their favorite program, as in take away from their ability to want to focus on their good intentions as philanthropists in addressing a need. All this is doing is matching the areas of need. Since we're distributing the block grant funds citywide, we should also leverage the private funds citywide, and that's the report back. How could that system work without eliminating or telling anyone that they don't care about a certain city, part of the city? It's about creating this balance. So I appreciate that discussion.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. We had one additional card from the speakers from Van Nuys. Mr. Matt Dow.
Yes, thank you. I just want to throw my support behind those activists downtown, public comment, and this is going to be one I'm going to be watching, because, see, it always happens, they say, "Oh yeah, this is good, we're going to do this, and we're going to do that," and then it never works out like that. And then they go, "Oh, it's a work in progress." And I'm a witness to the fact that the city doesn't fulfill many of its promises and obligations. So you need to not take this lip service they give you right here today. And if you've still got problems with this stuff, stay on their toes, on their heels, and keep barking and yelling and jumping up and down, whatever you have to do, because they'll throw it under the rug right now, they'll vote it through, and they're all the public comments. So I'm going to be watching to see what happens with this, because this is one of my pet things, is not getting these things ironed out with the community.
Thank you. That concludes our public comment. There's no other speakers on the queue. Now, Mr. Clerk, could you open the roll? Tabulate the vote. That has passed.
Eleven eyes.
Thank you. Next item.
Item one was called Special for Cards.
Mr. Arnold Sachs.
Good afternoon, Arnold Sachs. My concern with this item is you're looking to get a fee. Oh, wait, excuse me, one thing. This is CRA, oh, you're doing a, the CRA is involved in getting an appraisal. And I believe very recently in the downtown news, there was the story regarding an appraisal of park property in downtown LA. So my concerns are, who's doing the appraisal? And hey, it's the CRA, so you know something's fishy right off the bat. But who's doing the appraisal? Is it, is it an outside appraiser? Is it an appraiser of the bank? Is it an appraiser of the property? Those were the questions that were asked about the, the park property in downtown LA, but nobody ever seemed to answer it. It was just like water off a duck's ass. Thank you.
Please correct that, Mr. City Attorney.
Actually, he should be warned, he's not in compliance with the rules of the quorum.
Mr. Sachs, you're not warned with the, you're not in compliance with the rules of the quorum. Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, what's before us? Madam Clerk.
The item is before you, Mr. President.
Okay, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
And then your next item.
Item nine was called Special for Cards.
Clyde Williams.
Dr. Clyde Williams. Dr. Clyde Williams, yes. Hi, I'm Dr. Clyde Williams. There apparently was a confusion on this number. Sorry.
Thank you very much. Okay, that concludes our public comment. Mr. Clerk, what's before us right now?
The matter is before you, Mr. President.
Now, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
No, Mr. Sachs, you did not have a card on it. Next item.
Item 10 was called Special for Cards.
Mr. Arnold Sachs.
This is item 10. Oh, special events. Yes, special events. You have some items again, and I, by the way, I did have a card on number nine. Please check again. Special events, you have items again on the weekend. It was interesting how you managed to pull together for the LA Marathon, and the discussion is that it's going to cost the city, how much is it going to cost the people of LA to buy back the LA Marathon that you sold out to private enterprise? And just to refresh your memory, the date was changed to a Monday in February. I don't believe that the arguments were about the date changing. I believe it was just the swiftness of the change that occurred in late October. Then the date was changed to May. That was a huge uproar. Thank you for your time, and again, as always, your attention and answers. And please check on number nine.
We're going to check on that right now. We'll correct it in a minute. Michael, carry on.
I see here that we have over $10,000, almost $11,000 in Mr. Labange's district. We have people going without food today. You have city employees that are getting laid off, and Mr. Labange wants to give $10,000 away for what? $6,500 to the school for an event? LA Unified has enough money to do what they want. If they want to put on these events, allow LA Unified to pay for them. Why does the city of Los Angeles have to pay for special events that are happening in the schools? It's beyond me. We've got $27,000 going to District 5. District 5 has $16,000 going for a farmer's market. If you have that much money, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, take $16,000 and buy some food for the homeless and feed them. Don't spend $10,000 to pay for parking enforcement and everybody else to put on an event that's going to raise $5,000 for, for private companies, for people who are selling organic foods. Spend that $16,000, can buy a lot of food for people who are going hungry today. Instead, you're going to put it on a farmer's market that's going to have a few people buy fresh foods. $16,000 goes a long way to feed homeless and hungry people today. Again, we want to take our taxpaying dollars and give it to a few people and let them profit from it. That's a shame. Thank you.
Thank you. From Van Nuys, Mark Hurd.
Get out of here. Go. Thank you. Regarding the fee waivers, I think the ent- Regarding the fee waivers, I think the entire city is coming together to, you know, tighten our budgets, and this is probably another area that should be considered. I don't think we should wipe them out. I don't think we should just cancel all these programs. But here's another situation where, should we talk about 10%? Should we talk about 5%, 20%? Every nickel adds up. Every nickel adds up. And everybody in this country right now is tightening their belts trying to get through this thing. And I think we should all be in this one together. I don't think we should cancel anything. We need to keep these programs and things going, but I think we just all need to be in this together. And a lot of these things, you know, what's 5%? It's not going to kill anybody. So, thanks again to the council, though. You guys are doing great work.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. I have no other speaker cards. I don't want on the queue, so we could open the roll on this item. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item.
Item 14 called special for cards.
Dr. Clyde Williams.
Dr. Clyde Williams, 4115 Barrett Road, El Cerrano. Stump removal by the city services, uh, street services. There is somebody responsible for cutting down the trees. Generally, city services should focus on only those trees that were cut down by street services or urban forestry. However, why have street furniture pay for something that street services is legally obligated to do? If it was a subcontractor or a contractor of the city, as we have in El Cerrano, we have 20 stumps that are now sprouting because one of the contractors for city facilities cut them down. He hasn't removed them yet. In the same way, he's responsible. Whoever is responsible for the stumps should be the one that pays for it. $20,000 is equal to two total budgets for the neighborhood councils. Seems inappropriate to have this money put to some sort of services that should be paid for by others. Thank you.
Thank you. That is the last card, only card. Let's, Madam Clerk, let's open the roll on this issue. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Thank you. Next item.
Item 18 called special for cards, and a substitute ordinance has been circulated.
Dr. Williams.
Spay and neutering. The Los Angeles Audubon Society and the Audubon Society in general are, might I say, against feral cats because they kill a lot of birds. I myself have, might I say, protected several bird nests within my property from cat attack. The increase of fees and the application of fees, it sounds great, especially during this budgetary crisis. However, let's look at the practical enforcement. As you increase the fees, fewer people will have them licensed, fewer people will have them spayed and neutered. So, although it sounds nice, I would be concerned regarding the actual amount of revenue that will be generated versus the number of cats especially and dogs that are going to be just released or not licensed, not spayed, not neutered. There seems to be a difference. Maybe have an amnesty on all cats and dogs to have them licensed so that we actually may know what is involved. Thank you.
Matt Dowd for Van Nuys.
Yeah, first of all, I had a card in on 10, Mr. Labonge, when I first walked in the room, and somehow the city clerk has managed to lose it, so I'm expecting that to be reconsidered. Let me talk about item 18 here for a minute. And it's the Department of Animal Services, and obviously, we had a lot of drama within that department for a little while, and the general manager had to resign, Ed Box. But let me point out one thing here, that this is still the United States of America. No matter what you say, if I'm talking about the performance of that general manager, Ed Box, I'm allowed to say he was an ass clown. I'm allowed to say that in my general public comment on this item, on his performance. So, don't be telling people they can't use that word, or we'll get the ACLU down here so quick because they've been on that podium downtown.
Excuse me, Mr. President. Hold the speaker's time. Mr. City Attorney.
This, in your discretion, to warn the speaker to keep his comments within the decorum of the city council.
And thank you. Mr. Dowd, if you would pay heed to that and then continue your comments.
I will, and I'd thank the city attorney to provide a list of words now to me that are banned because I need that list immediately. And now I want to talk about Ed Box, and I don't know what I can call him anymore. And he was a guy that you tolerated way too long in this department, and I don't even know what names I can call him as part of his performance. So, that's a violation of the First Amendment. The First Amendment. You're still doing it. And how many times do we have to come down here to Van Nuys or City Hall? And you, I'm going to be coming down, and you're going to be seeing me a lot because of this. I'm fired up now. Your city clerk couldn't get my card in. Now, the one thing you did right on this item, I'm going to tell you, see, and it's not all bad. I'll tell you when you do things right. You said revise and increase certain fees, so you're transparent finally. You're increasing it and you're saying so, not review. And all secretive, it's a review, but really, it's just going up. So, I'd thank you to learn the First Amendment. I want a list of all the words that are banned, that I'm not allowed to call a department general manager or a city council.
Thank you very much for your comment. Next, from Van Nuys, Mark Hurd, please.
Whew. Well, you guys got him fired up. Thank you, council. On the fees, I'd like to echo the sentiments from the first speaker that when you do raise fees, you know, you can create an incentive for people to actually not want to bring their pets in, and that could be something to be considered. In all fairness, though, I don't think these fees are really going up all that much, but that's something to consider. But thanks for letting me share.
Thank you very much, Arnold Sachs.
Everybody's talking about the fees, but let's talk about fees that were raised once before for garbage collection, to hire more police. And then we find out that the fees were used to pay for salaries because, according to the auditor, Laura Chek, fees can be used for several different purposes. So, you have a fee increase here. How will the council and the city manipulate the use of these fees? And where will the money end up going? Will it be going for salaries? Or will it be going for spay and neutering? Or will it be going for something else? Like the new shelters that were built, but without the adequate utilities that they needed, like the cooling period places and the watering that was necessary for the shelter in San Pedro? How will the fees be used? Let's get that in black and white before we move on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sachs. Phyllis Doherty.
Good morning. Phyllis Doherty of Analytic Issues Movement. I just want to thank Councilman Alakon and his staff, and all of you who have taken an interest in the issue that I brought up on this ordinance. Councilwoman Gruel and Councilman Parks asked me to speak with the department when I brought this up in finance. It's been corrected. I think they've made a very, very good adjustment to the wording, and we're very grateful to you for this cooperative effort.
Thank you, Ms. Doherty. There's no more speaker cards here. The only one on the speaker's queue. Madam Clerk? Let's open the roll on this item. Close the roll. Tabulate the votes.
Eleven eyes.
Thank you. Next item.
And, Mr. President, the ordinance will go over one week.
Thank you very much.
Hi, Mr. President, do you wish to reset the regular meeting and go into the special meeting?
Start here on item 19. We have that before us anymore? 19. Let's take 19 right now. We have two speaker cards. Matt Dowd.
Okay, yes, sorry, we, another problem. We had at Van Nuys no special agendas out here. I had to go to Mr. Cardenas's office and get the agenda printed out so that we have one here for the public. But anyway, let me get into this. Oh, my goodness. Oh, Dennis Zine, I'm talking about him. Garcetti, Eric Garcetti, let me talk about his performance. And Councilman Tom Labonge. This is the one where we're in the biggest budget crunch of all time, and we're giving away a couple of ambulances for a dollar each to assist the city committee, and you don't even know where those ambulances are going to go. And here's the other thing, Dion O'Connell, city attorney, I don't have a timer here, so I, there's no way for me to know. You're just going to have to let me say what I want to say on this item. I won't, I won't go over.
Hold the time of the speaker. What we are going to do is, where the clerk is keeping the time right here, and when it reaches the time, we'll call and let you know that. We also will let general services know we need to fix that timer. Thank you very much.
Oh, is that the end, though? Is that the end already? How do?
No, you have time. You have a time right now.
Oh, yeah, I need a few more seconds. How about we do this? Why don't we, on this item here, why don't we keep the ambulances, sell them on eBay, and use the money to fix the clock at Van Nuys?
Thank you very much. Mark Hurd, please.
Uh, thank you, council, for letting me address you. I think those ambulances are going to a great cause, and I'm really proud of you guys for doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. No more cards on this item. Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. The ambulances are going to the Beirut Sister City Committee, a nonprofit, nonsectarian, nonpolitical organization, and this fosters goodwill and helps with the people who need medical services in the community of Beirut, Lebanon. We do this on a humanitarian level. All costs are incurred by the municipal government of Beirut, Lebanon. There's no cost to taxpayers of the city of Los Angeles, and these are surplus ambulances that are up for salvage by the LA City Fire Department. An ambulance service in the city of Los Angeles or the United States would not want these. They're past their useful life here in the city of Los Angeles, so it's a humanitarian effort that we're doing. We do this for other countries that need this type of surplus equipment, whether it be used fire equipment or used ambulance in this particular case, but this will help humanitarian efforts in the area of Beirut, Lebanon, where they've established peace once again, and hopefully, this will help people that are in need of medical treatment. So, we encourage an eye vote. We did recognize representatives of Beirut City Council earlier in this session, and we would encourage an eye vote and get these ambulances on the way for humanitarian purposes to help the people that visit that area of the world. Thank you.
And thank you for your leadership, Mr. Zine. Madam Clerk, what's before us?
The item is before you, Mr. President.
All right, let's open the roll on this item. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Forward that. Next item, please.
Item 20 called special for cards.
Item 20 called special for cards. Mark Hurd, please. Van Nuys, it's your last card, Mark, that we have here, please. Mark Hurd.
Trying to be efficient. I think Matt was first on this one. Was he not? Yeah.
I'm calling Mark Hurd right now, please.
All right. I don't know the item.
Mr. Hurd.
Um, thank you. Oh, oh, Prop 1A money. That's the, taking it back. I agree with you guys completely on this, and I support this measure. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt Dowd, please.
All right, see, he, just for Channel 35, and he's supporting the city's opposition to a measure that the state has to enact. This is Arnold Schwarzenegger. See, he's taken back some Prop 1A money, and I'm glad. See, now, here's why I'm glad, not because we're losing it, of course not. It's because I want you to know what it's like when you give something and then you take it away. And this city council, now you're going to lose some money, and it's like $2 billion for a bunch of local governments. But they have to balance it wherever they take it from. You know, they're your big brother. You know, state constitution, federal constitution, they own you. So, this is just going against what has to be done. See, you, they looked at the city of Los Angeles, and they went, "Wow, look at all the money you wasted, look at all the fee waivers, look at all the affordable housing you didn't build. Look at all the things you're wasting everywhere. We want our Prop 1A money back. At least we'll balance our budget."
Thank you. Mr. Sachs.
Yes, good afternoon, Arnold Sachs. Maybe you should hold off on this, wait until the amendments that are up for vote are decided in May 19th because the $2 billion would be a drop in the bucket if the amendments don't pass that the state legislation wants the public to eat again. Of course, we're going to get hammered either way, but how much more will we get, will you dip into the pockets and reduce services to the public if and when those amendments don't pass?
Thank you. I'd like to call on Mr. Parks.
Can I ask the city attorney and the CAO to come out?
Mr. CAO?
Ray, would you explain to us, in the sense of this may revised, what it means and how it could impact the city? And then I'd like to ask the city attorney to give us any understanding, whether there's any legal recourse for us.
Okay. As I think this information has been presented, I know there's been some studies or research done by the League of California Cities and certainly the LAO, this is the state LAO, has been looking at the cash flow problem with the state and has mentioned they could get as high as $23 billion. What has been floated, I'll say, by the Department of Finance and by the governor's office is to withhold roughly about $2 billion in property tax receipts across the state. On a local level, that translates for the city of roughly about $68 million. Certainly, there is a question as far as whether that would be, we would be impacted this year versus next year, though since we're already well into May, I'm sure it's going to, it would impact us next year. At the same time, there are other concerns that we have brought to your attention throughout the year regarding gas tax, and we've been looking at the possibility that we, given the state's cash flow problem, that we may not get further gas tax receipts for this year in looking at the numbers that translates to roughly about $26 million, a little over $26 million for the remainder of the year. So, we could be hit actually on a number of fronts. We've spoken about the lack of reimbursement of Prop 12 and 40 monies, the Prop 1B. Given the dire circumstances from the state of the, perhaps inability for the propositions to pass, the state is not in a very good cash position whatsoever.
Ray, would you tell us, in the sense of the Prop 1B, Prop K, what those dollars figures are on top of this potential $68 million? And also the gas tax money?
Certainly on the Prop 1240, we've had mentioned that there's roughly about $75 million that we are expecting, that we have projects going, and that we are waiting for reimbursement. We've, certainly, we've done on the city, be able to keep a minimum number of projects flowing, but there is quite a bit, there are millions, literally millions of dollars that we need to be reimbursed for those projects.
And this 68 is contemplated in addition to what may occur after the May elections?
Yes. It's, there's speculation that part of this was floated in trying to stir up some support for some of the state propositions, certainly with this $2 billion potential impact to local government, this is cities and counties statewide. It would have a huge impact on both us and everyone else.
Okay. And then Pete, could you give us an idea, what are the legal ramifications?
The Constitution was amended back in 2004 by Proposition 1A to limit the state's ability to indiscriminately just take money locally and to ensure that in those limited instances where the state was allowed to take money, that it would be repaid with interest within three years. That's the provision under which the Department of Finance has proposed That's the provision under which the Department of Finance has proposed that the state actually take this, in the case of the city, about $68 million. The Constitution authorizes this. It requires that it be done with a declaration of fiscal hardship by the governor and a two-thirds vote of each of the houses of the state legislature and it's our view that so long as they follow these procedures and also at the same time adopt a statute that ensures payment back to the local entities within three years with interest, that it's legally permissible and that there would not be a successful action that could be brought.
Okay, let me ask also, is there a maximum number of times they can have a taking?
They could do this twice, two fiscal years within 10-year period, beginning the first time that they've acted.
Okay, is this, what members, is this their second time or?
You know, I don't have the definite information in it. I recollect that when this was adopted, there was some action taken the subsequent year, but I'm not sure. If that was the case, that would have been 2004, so they might, they would be up through 2014.
Yeah, let me ask, Ray, do you know if this has happened before? Is this their second time or would this be the first time, the taking?
Certainly on the property tax, it would be the first time they have not done that.
So they have, they have that schedule of two times on each of the tax revenues? So you say it's the first time on property tax?
This would be the first time for property.
But they've taken it on others?
They've taken a look at both the gas tax and Prop 42 monies.
Okay, all right. Let me just ask colleagues, this is something that certainly is going to impact the budget just as we are getting ready to present it, if the $68 million is taken and the, an additional take from the election, if those initiatives pass, do not pass, then I think it will cause our budget to be even more fluid than what it is today. But I just wanted to, we found out about this very late and we wanted to get this motion forward and put a city position that we would oppose the $68 million taking, although it's within the confines of the previous 1A proposition in the state.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney, Mr. CIO. Madam Clerk, this item's before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
Thank you. And next item, please.
Item 21 called special for cards.
Arnold Sacks, Mr. Sacks. Mr. Sacks has left the room. Mark Hurd, please.
Track Max. Oh, Track Max, yeah. Why don't you call them in order that they put in?
Yes, thank you very much. Regarding Track Max, I just want to once again address the development issue in general. I went to a area planning commission meeting the other day at the Medina Center in Westwood regarding one on, a development on Westwood. Now, this isn't specific to this, but this is really a general comment about this. And it was a little, a little disheartening that every single person there except the developer was really against the project and then they voted five yes. And I'm just kind of wondering, is that, is that just the way it is in Los Angeles? Is it pointless to go to those meetings or, you know, I just kind of wonder if the voice of the people is being heard at these planning commission meetings or if these people are just appointed by the mayor to promote development? So, and I understand we need development, we need dollars and all that. My big thing is let's build it green and I don't mind if you build it before the infrastructure as long as it's green. That's the only way I would support it. But we didn't hear anything about a green roof, low flush, energy efficient appliances, nothing on the product.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd, for those comments. Mr. Dowd, Matt Dowd?
It's way off the topic, you're way off. See, it don't even matter if it's green, green's a joke. Anyway, let me talk about the, it is, in the global sense, it's beyond fixing, don't even trip about green. I want to talk about these track maps, though. The blueprint, as Zuma Dog calls them, the blueprint for development and congestion. But here's, here's the big thing, you see, we need a city attorney and this is relevant to this because these track maps are getting approved and these buildings are getting made with variations and exemptions on city charter and that's the city attorney who allows those ordinances to squeak through to take all those little U-turns and get these things approved. So, see, but Jack Weiss, he's all tied up in this Weatherly Capital, I'm sure it's going to lead to Robin Kramer and the mayor and all of these shady developments and this is probably not one, but there's a ton of them out there and they're coming for Jack Weiss because he's Weatherly Capital and all of that shady pension money scandal is all tied into one big old pot. Good luck, I hope I can.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dowd. Thank you. That completes that item. And Madam Clerk, what's before us now?
Item 21, which is the final map.
And let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
Thank you very much. Next item?
Mr. President, do you wish to adjourn the special meeting and go back into the regular meeting?
Yes, I do, please.
And, Mr. President, do you wish to reconsider item nine for the cards?
Yes, item nine for the cards that I located, thank you. Open the roll on this item, we're going to open the public hearing, Mr. Reconsideration, please. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
Good, that matters before us. We have a card from Mr. Sacks. Mr. Sacks has left the chambers. Dr. Clyde Williams left the chambers. Lucy Carroll, Lucy Caruso, excuse me, Lucy, Lucy Caruso. One-minute public comment. Thank you, Lucy.
Can I ask you, because I got upset a little bit, what, um?
That was my air.
It's okay. Is it about the bus or the house? The public transportation or is it about housing? Okay, I just want to mention one little thing. When I take a bus recently, sometimes I can't, I'll tell you, he offended me and I don't, I just don't feel I want to comment on anything anymore, okay? You dump patients and so you're saying it's not the city. I know I'm not talking about that, so I'll leave it alone. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. That matter is now before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, what's before us?
Council has motions for posting interference?
So ordered.
The desk is clear.
All right, members, are there any announcements at this time? I know a very important announcement tomorrow is Fire Service Day at our city fire stations throughout the city of Los Angeles. Visit your local firefighters and thank them for their great job and any adjourned motions? I'd ask all to please rise. Call on Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have three adjourned motions. One, I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Maddie McCoy, who was born in January 1990 in Terrell, Texas. She completed early education in Texas, moved to Los Angeles in 1944 and her first job was the custodial service with the Pacific Electric Red Car Line. She also became a teacher's aide for LA Unified School District. She joined the Tabernacle of Faith Baptist Church in 1945 and was a member there for 64 years under the leadership of three pastors. She also was an active member in the Booster Number One Auxiliary and eventually had a auxiliary named in her honor. She was, since moving to Los Angeles, her activities generally around the arts and crafts and also she was a homemaker and also a person that basically personalized dolls and special occasion books and albums. She's an avid Laker fan, baseball fan. She passed away and is survived by her daughter and three grandchildren. Also, I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Virginia Yvonne Thompson, born in 1918, passed away April 28, 2009. She's a teacher and principal for the Los Angeles area for more than 40 years. She received national recognition as Teacher of the Year in 1978. After returning, after retiring, she continues to work in the field of education and operated a reading and math clinic for many years. Her former students were thrilled to have her as a teacher and for their children and continuing generations of people came forward. Her funeral service will be held on Wednesday, May 13, 11:00 a.m. at Holman Methodist Baptist Church at 3320 West Adams. She's survived by her daughter. And finally, we'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Alexis Cristobal, who's the father-in-law of our general manager of Department of Finance and he passed away on April 30, 2009 at the age of 92. He served his country honorably during World War II and was a member of the Army Air Force and he trained as a Tuskegee Airmen. He was laid to rest in McCollum, Mississippi on May 5. He's survived by one sister and three sons and two daughters.
Thank you, all members on that. Ms. Perry?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I'd like to adjourn in memory of Maria Macedonio. Mrs. Macedonio passed away on Tuesday, May 5. She was the proud mother of four children, one daughter and three sons born in Michoacan, Mexico. She came to the United States in 1967 and had been a resident in the 9th Council District ever since. She was a proud member of the Trinity Block Club and was very involved in her community. It brought her great joy when her son, Rogelio, became president of the Trinity Block Club. Mrs. Macedonio enjoyed working with the community and took great pride in what she did. She will be taken to Tijuana on Saturday, the 9th of May, to be buried in Mexico next to her loving husband and I would like to join in remembering and celebrating her life.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Members, I ask for you to adjourn in memory of Danny Ozark, a one-time Dodger coach and Walter Alston and Tommy Lasorda, he later managed the Philadelphia Phillies. And I also like to ask for you to adjourn in memory of Mickey Carroll, one of the last surviving munchkins in the 1939 MGM classic, The Wizard of Oz. Mickey Carroll. Mr. Clerk, let's call the roll. Okay, at this meeting of the Los Angeles City Council, adjourn, everybody have a good weekend.